I will call the meeting to an end. This is Wednesday, November 20th, 2024, Mendon to Litford meeting. And just so everyone knows, this meeting is being recorded. If you could please stand and join me for the question.
But it's to have in the states, the United Republic, stance, one nation, invisible, the repeat, and test this.
So we have first, our first item on the agenda is the public hearing with the Board of Assessors. So I would invite the Board of Assessors and also our principal assessor to join us. And I don't know if you would like to open your meeting as well.
We're having a continuation of our meetings that we started downstairs. So we're just continuing.
Chairman, I move to reopen our meeting.
That's a great idea. I'll step down from chair and do the same thing. And then all those in favor say aye, and aye too. Therefore, we're going to continue our meeting.
Fantastic.
All right, as I said, but we're going to break from tradition. Even though then it's a really traditional kind of town, everything seems to stay the same. This year, we're going to change. The assessors, as in the Board of Assessors, will not be giving you the classification hearing presentation. We're going to ask our principal assessor, Sherri Bates, to do it for us. And for those that have not met Sherri, this is Sherri Bates. And she is, she comes to Mendon with almost 35 years' experience in the assessing world. And we're very proud of her that she also recently got her bachelor's degree in geospatial technology, whatever they call it, some kind of space stuff. But anyway, so we're looking, G I S, yeah, we're looking forward for some good things to come with the G I S stuff here in town. Enough of that, I'm going to yield to Sherri and Sherri will run the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So.
Wait a minute, excuse me.
Yes.
There's no more individual microphones.
Oh, okay.
Three minded.
Don't hesitate to speak up in case you know.
So this is our annual classification hearing for the select board to determine whether or not they want to have a split tax rate, also voting on the residential exemption, open space discount, and small business exemption. Just as a quick introduction on this, this is the supporting documentation for an estimated tax rate. Work is still being done on the recap sheet by various departments. So tax rate is, I don't, I don't know the number as of yet until county and town clerk, all of them finish with all of their numbers and everything on the recap sheet. And then if everything goes according to plan, everything hopefully will be finished and certified by the end of possibly next week in order for the tax bills to be mailed out at the end of December to everyone. The purpose of the classification hearing involves law with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 56, in deciding whether to ship the tax burden between the classes. And as I said, the select board will review, discuss, and vote on residential factor, open space discount, the residential exemption, and small business exemption. And the classification hearing does not change the total levy for the community. It simply determines what portion is going to be borne by each class. The classification hearing does not determine the tax rate, nor does it determine how much money can be raised. A split tax rate will not increase the revenue of the town. And the town voters for the town of Mendon determine what the tax levy will be by the votes that they took at town meetings. The four votes that you will be taking, the residential factor that determines whether or not you want to have a split tax rate, which will be putting more of a burden on the commercial industrial, personal property properties versus the residential properties, the open space discount, which shifts the burden to the residential from the open space. Residential exemption gives a discount to the residential classes for owner occupied homes. And the small commercial exemption, which provides a discount to qualifying commercial properties. The next slide here, this just shows you the breakdown of what property types are paying the largest amounts. And as you can see, the residential is your highest property type for your, for your budget, followed by the personal property is only 69 million versus the commercial at 85 million, and very small industrial of a little over 5 million. Now, we do have the senior means tested, and the board have voted the 150% on senior means festive exemption. With the information that has been put in thus far on the tax recap sheet on Gateway, there's going to be a shift of one cent between the residential and the commercial industrial properties. These numbers right here that you're seeing for tax rate, those are only preliminary numbers until, as I said, all the other entities have finished getting their information in and make sure all the numbers are equaling out and agreeing with each other. But as you can see, it's a one cent difference, which means that on an average valued property of 637,000, you're talking $6.38 per view.
Is that our average home cost?
That's, that's the town of Mendon's average home valuation for a single family. This slide here is just giving you an idea as to the breakdown of the different types of property, single family condominiums. And you can see where the, the average value change for each of those and what the average value is. As I said, the single family homes, average value was 637,676. That's an average value change between the FY24 and FY25, 7.7%. And that's based on the analysis on the sales market for calendar year 23 that was used to determine the values. And the next slide just gives you and I the information as to what the average value was for FY24 versus what it is for FY25. So the single family homes, as I said, went up about 7.7% on average, and the commercial industrial had an average increase of 6%. The average tax bill, again, this is just preliminary numbers, but it gives you an idea as to the change in tax dollars that could potentially be seen. We'll know more once the tax rate has been certified by the Department of Revenue, and that is the ones who say, what is what? As you can see, this is our levy information, and our max levy limit for the FY25 is 20,617,275. A split tax rate, you really, a community really does not look at a split tax rate unless they have at least 25% of their total tax evaluation as being commercial industrial. Mendon only has 10.36% for the commercial industrial. Split tax rate, it does, in some instances, discourage businesses from coming into the community. Also, historically, the town of Mendon has voted not to accept the residential exemption, the small commercial exemption, or the open space exemption. And coming out with the open space exemption, there is more property identified in the town of Mendon as open space. It's residential, commercial, industrial, or it's under chapter land. So that open space wouldn't apply to any of those properties.
Can I just ask this, in closing, a split tax rate should not be considered? With the state recommendation, does that state recommendation, your recommendation?
Board's recommendation.
What's that?
And this is board's recommendation. Thank you for that. That was a very clear presentation. I really appreciated the graphics and the numbers that, so thank you for that. So are there, are there other questions for our chief assessor?
My, my question would be about the open space, having nothing classified as open space. What is the assessor's definition of space? Is that, like the, any time about a minute?
Open space is land that is held for natural purpose, that is not being used for, to produce income, is open to the public, is not classified under chapter 61, 61A, or 61B. And we have no properties in the town in this, very few towns at all within the Commonwealth. Out of 352 communities, I did some checking on different communities, recap sheets from the past year. And out of the 2025 that I looked at, not one community had any open space under, it's, it's under classification code 200, and there were no communities that I could find that had any of those. And there was no.
Open space, when I'm talking about property that's owned by a municipality, owned by an individual.
Correct.
I could just add, in the, in the DOR's guidelines for how property is classified, if you remember the slide where Sherri had listed all the different things that had number codes, vacant, vacant land is classified in the 100s as residential land. So you could have three kinds. You could have buildable vacant land, you can have potentially buildable vacant land, and you can have deemed unbuildable vacant land, usually that's covered in wetland or something. So it's classified usually under residential areas. But I'd be hard pressed to find anybody in this state that's got class 200 open space. I don't even know why it exists.
It's been a very altruistic private citizen.
If there's a conservation restriction, it's not class 200.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like it had to be installed.
Yeah, classic, class 900 is all non-taxable property. And typical town owned land, whether it be open space or this land for right now, they're all non-taxable.
900.
The 900s, and that's usually where you find something like that, land owned by Mass Audubon, land owned by any, with a land trust conservation restriction, they're all class 900 non-taxable.
Just, just a question, the 25% valuation, the recommendation that you're making about a split tax rate, this is the first time I've seen sort of a target, hoping to start to consider it. So could you, I'm not considering it necessarily, but I am kind of curious, having put it out there. Can you explain to anyone watching, what went into you defining 25% as that threshold?
Standardly, the Department of Revenue has stated that if your town does not have at least 25% commercial industrial property, you really should not be looking at a split tax rate.
Okay, so it's your, this board's recommendation, but the source is still D O R.
So you, so you are making notes that you should get to at least 25%.
Or higher, I mean.
Higher is always better.
It, it depends on what our goal is, but I also agree with the statement. Several years ago, we had several businesses relocated to Mendon on 140. And I actually went and interviewed them all, why they came here. And all three came from Milford, and they all cited the same reason, single tax rate. If you want to engage Kevin Mean in dialogue, he funded the 20-plus million cost of each of those three dealerships by the savings in moving out of Milford's 100, whatever it is, 70%.
175.
Split rate, they're at the top level in Milford. And he, he told me personally, he saved enough money to pay to build those dealerships, just on the taxes. So people tell you, and I can name you the businesses on 140s, the Gasco Garage, Cross construction, and I'm trying to think of the third one, I just can't remember the name. Told me personally that geographically where, where their customer base is, that they wanted to come here and get rid of the split rate. I mean, I know one business in Milford where the owner told the select board there two years ago that his first $100 of net profit a day, six days a week, went to pay his property taxes. And he obviously was arguing to reduce that split, but he gave a cold hard number. I mean, that's, that's the type of thing that happens.
I think that the current tax rate for, for FY25 is going to be like $23.85 per thousand.
Yeah, they're way up there on the split.
That's huge.
And so when, when you have a city like Cambridge, for example, I know has an extraordinarily high commercial industrial base because of, what's the square where everything's located, a little biotop? Wherever it is up there, they're able to do a nice split to give the residents a break. But they've got the commercial base, been following the news about Boston. The whole thing about them wanting to raise the rate temporarily is because their business revenue is driving, value is dropping dramatically due to unused buildings, they were going to have a huge residential shift. So, you know, I, I think we're all aligned with the single rate is the best for Mendon.
So it might be useful to have like a citation about the Department of Revenue's recommendation, just for the future, like just for, in case people ask us, because I do occasionally hear from the public, why doesn't Mendon have a split tax rate?
We don't have, bottom line is real simple. We don't have a commercial, industrial, or personal property level that is great enough to handle the exchange.
I do understand that, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, it, it, yeah, but let's take a little step further. You don't have to go to a 1.5 or 75% change. You can go to 1.01. But, but the, the, the issue would be that, that you then take all of the costs, that, that additional cost, you could be putting it onto a commercial base, which we have, what, 10.6%? And, and, and the commercial base, what town services are they using? Really none. So, but you are increasing their cost, even though it's only a smidge. But you are increasing their cost over and above the residential rate. And it, it just doesn't become feasibility, feasible mathematically to make those changes until you have a commercial base that if somebody wanted to pick up their bat and ball and go home to another town, well, that, that's not going to cause a tremendous amount of, of stir on, on your financial side. So that's why the 20 to 25%, D O R Act, I think, talks about 20, but we really kind of believe that it's 25%. So that if you had, if you had an Amazon move into town, and, and they're going to be your biggest taxpayer on a split rate, that's one thing. Then if you go to start changing it, even if you went to a, a rate change of, let's say that 1.1 to maybe 1.05, you could be raising their tax bill on an average sized building that they have in the neighborhood of $350,000, just because you split the tax rate. And, and we're not at that position to do that. Not that we have one of those big places, but if you did, and then, and then if they, if, once they're there and they're paying, it's all in your levy, what do you do when they pick up and go somewhere else? That, that you have to fill that, you have to backfill that levy with all of the balance of the other rate payers, all the other taxpayers. So that's why it's just simpler, we're, we're not in any position to do it. So that's why we have just traditionally said at 10.6, traditionally it's been 20%. We would even go as far as to say 25%. And, and, and even then, it's, it's questionable, and you have to be careful doing it.
Just one other thing also, Tim. We have a large number of chapter 61A farmland and chapter 61B open space parcels. When you shift the rate higher in commercial, that is applied to those farmland and open space parcels.
Because it's.
Under the D O R rules.
Classifieds.
So in effect, if you have a split rate, you're taking all the farming in this town and raising its, its taxes.
It's classified as commercial or not, it's a non-residential.
No, they are, they are properties with.
Like anything that's not residential, then it would be part of, it explicitly calls out.
Commercial, industrial, personal property, and the chapter 61 property. So anybody with a farmland, if you do a, a, a split rate in this town, higher in commercial, you're imposing that higher rate on all the filed farming and property in this town. You know, a lot of cities don't have any farmland. But if you look particularly, when you get west of Worcester, where you have hundreds of farmland properties, you know, just mentioning a dual rate, it's anathema out there, but you have to remember in a town like this, it may affect 15 or 20 little farmland we have left that's operational, it does affect. So that's another fact that.
Yes, point of order, yes. So we did not formally open the tax classification hearing. So this, this is the presentation that we should open the hearing before we continue our deliberation on this.
You opened our joint.
We did.
You can be just, so.
What's that?
I'm going to open that.
Okay.
Second.
All right, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you.
I was looking up as well, in the last data that I had available here of the 280 odd towns, not cities, 280 odd towns, something like 76% had a single tax pass, did not shift.
Yeah, I mean, in years past, it's more of the discussion to make sure people understand what the potential impact is. But I, I never want to dismiss and say, we're never going to have a split rate.
Right.
If our, if our economic development, as long as we're pursuing economic development, I say no. But if we ever feel we're at a point saturated, perhaps we reconsider.
Right, I think this is useful information to know that what the goals are to achieve. Because I know this is a question that comes up quite regularly from the public. And so to have that answer that this recommendation is that we have, you know, these benchmarks of at least 20, ideally 25% before it's viable. And especially since it does discourage businesses, sorry, having that split rate discourages businesses as you have experienced with businesses moving from Milford.
But I would, I would also say that going down the road, we have a gas station in progress on Hartford Avenue. You have the vacant land next to it, there's proposed either Financial Institute or another gas station. You have the warehouse being built behind the Gasco gas station. And you have a, what they call a flex building being built where the old Mylith warehouse was on the corner of Page Street. You know, it's, it's worth continuing every year to look at it, as those all come and get taxable. It's worth continually looking at that and saying, are we getting there? Because at some point, if you get there, you know, then, then it's time to say, take another hard look at it.
I think it's just due diligence to have the conversation, Kevin.
Yes.
I think it's worthwhile to have it reported so we can all be better educated.
And there may come a day of 16 and 140 ever getting all the way built out, the way the town would like to see, that that makes sense. Right now, it just doesn't.
Are there additional questions? I believe we would close the, the hearing before we vote on it, so.
We're the shortest tax recap open beginning. I move to close at 6:30 PM, public hearing, the Board of Assessors to review the tax classification hearing for FY26.
Hi, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I need, do I need to amend that to FY25?
Oh, it's FY25.
So as amended.
Okay, so all in favors. All right, opposed, all right, great. So we will close, the, the public hearing is closed. And so now we can consider voting on this specific question.
I think we could use a little bit of guidance from the assessors. We need four separate votes from the select board.
Say, there was a document that came, the attachments that Katie sent this afternoon. Blue.
Well, I know what they are, off the top of my head, if you don't, just go.
In the, in the email.
Yep.
It's also the semi-follicient point on the.
There they are.
The slide.
You should say 25.
These, these are our last year's motions, I haven't been able to.
Oh, all right.
We say 25.
So anyone making a motion, please note that you should say.
I'm going to not implement a residential factor FY25.
Second.
Discussion.
Residential factor one.
It has to be residential factor. It's the most likely.
So just say that you, who are residential factor, we're implementing.
I move to then, regardless of what Blue says, I move to implement a residential factor of one for FY25.
Second.
Great, discussion.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right, thank you. So next, we have, we're two.
Can we do one motion if we, if I intend to not, I'm going to make a motion not to implement any of the remaining factors. I move to not implement open space, discount residential exemption, or small business commercial exemption. For FY25.
Second. Discussion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, the motion passes, all right, next.
So is a, is a residential factor of one the same as.
Five, you, five, you don't, it's, it's, it didn't care.
And then the LA5, we didn't present.
Because basically, the accountant and the town clerk need to finalize their numbers. Don't expect a large variance, but soon as they do, then our board signs it.
Okay, yeah, that doesn't require us.
Not anymore, they changed that two years ago.
Right.
So the town clerk signs it that it was a legally posted meeting, and a majority of the board signed it. And same with the recap sheet.
We have a tax recap meeting on Monday to make sure we have everything squared away.
So are there any other points we need to vote on relative to this tonight? No, those were the four points that need to be voted on by the select board. Okay.
And it's on the floor. Good, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I move to adjourn and end the Board of Assessor meeting at 6:59 PM.
Okay, I'll step down and second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're all set.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, uh, so, uh, next up is citizen statements and petitions. There are, I don't see anyone here, any hands in the room or online. So, uh, next up, we have, um, acknowledgements and announcements. First of all, I, uh, I believe you were all, all aware that Peg Tatro, uh, has recently retired, uh, her, she had sort of one final last day, but then is also working a couple of days this week while Ellen is attending a conference. But we had recently, um, recognized, formally recognized some other retirees and I do not believe that we have done this with Peg. So, so I guess, uh, Peg has, um, I think we could do, I know that Ellen wrote, sent a nice write-up, Jeremy, that you forwarded to, but I think what I'm asking is, do we want to do a formal citation, recognition of Peg's many years of service to the town? And if so, I would entertain such a motion.
So moved.
Okay, uh, discussion?
Uh, let's get into the recommendations. There's a lot of the policy document, I guess, at some point that the board, um, keep track of and, uh, and then did note retirements, they have, and I think it's important.
Just a, just a brief, um, background on Peg. She was elected town clerk in nineteen eighty-eight and she had a brief appointment to the select board through special legislation. Uh, she remained clerk until two thousand, worked in the select board office until two thousand and six where she retired. Um, and then in two thousand and thirteen, she came back as assistant town clerk and had been working in the office ever since for two different town clerks. Um, so she has had a, a, a career of service to the town.
So, yeah, and I know, uh, I first met her, she's, she's the one who did the, uh, my, my marriage license when I got married in nineteen ninety-nine and I did not realize it until, you know, years later that that was when I first met her. So, um, so anyhow, so there was a motion, there was a second, there was discussion, any further discussion? So what I'm hoping is that we can, you know, present this formally to her at some point. Perhaps if she's going to the holiday party, we could encourage to, you know, a formal handoff and prepare some words perhaps. Um, all right, so any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Great, thank you. And then, um, other announcements, so there's the OLV Holiday Fair on November twenty-third. Jeremy, do you have information about that? Is that the one that we had the sign?
Yeah, we have some signs up, so it's, um, at Our Lady of the Valley, uh, Regional School, seventy-five Mendon Street in Uxbridge. Uh, so it's, uh, community event, craft fair, vendor fair, things like that. So it's my anticipation to have a community events like this from, uh, town and not-for-profit and community partners be part of our announcements at the beginning. Um, so going forward, we can expect to see a lot of senior center, library-style events here where we just let the community know at the start of our meeting. So if you're meeting, what's, what's going on in town and, and things?
Again, I think there has been, I think that the idea has been floated a couple of times of having some sort of community events calendar. And I think that's another thing that would be good for the town to do. So like hopefully, uh, we'll talk about that at a future meeting. Um, and then we have the Brothers of the Brush Santa Parade and Tree Lighting, which is on December sixth. That's going to also be showing up later on in the agenda when we vote formally to, um, allow the parade. But just, we wanted to mention that here in that, you know, it's not forgotten, it's just coming up later in the agenda. And yeah, as Jeremy said, we probably, there, there will be other, uh, community events and I expect that there may be some coming up soon. So I would encourage people to check out the library, the library's calendar of events, as well as the, the senior center's newsletter, which has, um, the scene, I believe the senior scene is what they call that, which has a lot of upcoming events. All right, anything on acknowledgements and announcements, any further ones? Okay. So then we have some, um, do we want to skip over, yeah, we'll, we'll come back to the meeting minutes because we have a few of those. And we have, um, we have a number of guests in the audience today, so I think we will bring those, uh, up. So why don't we move to, should we move to item seven first? Okay, let's move to item seven. The Mendon Police Department Recognition Accreditation by Massachusetts Police Accreditation. Just join us.
So what Corporal Erskine is presenting there is the actual award that we received on October thirtieth. So that was received by the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission. This was results of years of hard work. That would, got a nice big, huge award for that we can build the station. I thought I explained to, to the residents what exactly accreditation is, um, so I made a little synopsis of it. Uh, accreditation is self-initiated process by which police agencies voluntarily strive to meet and maintain standards that have been established for law enforcement professionals by professionals. The program establishes standards on best practices police agencies to adopt. Agencies then establish written directives and procedures for their personnel to implement. Standards dictate which topical areas an agency must have policies and procedures, leading to agencies' chief executive officer and supervisory staff to develop and enforce agency, agency-specific policies and procedures. Most of the commission's standards require agencies to commit their often unwritten policies and procedures into writing. The remaining standards are equipment or facility-related, uh, generally found in communications, holding facilities and property rooms. Achieving accreditation, uh, means that an agency has agreed to adopt the program's standards as a way of doing business. That said, certification and accreditation mean that the agency is committed to meeting professional standards. The agency is willing to be assessed on a regular scheduled basis by the commission, appointed assessors to confirm compliance with professional standards, and the agency agrees to correct any deficiencies discovered during assessment process to establish, establish and reestablish compliance on program standards. So this is our first dual award of this. So back in early two thousands, uh, we were actually one of the first ten in the entire state to become an accredited agency. Um, because of our facility and lack of funding and I think interest of the, the administration at the time, it kind of fell to the wayside. We slipped to the next level, which was certification, and then we fell completely out of the program. So at that time, Massachusetts only had ten towns where we won. So it was something we were pretty proud of at the time. When I became chief, we had well long let it pass. One of my initiatives when I became chief was to bring back accreditation along with other list of things that we had to do. This is kind of like the final thing that I wanted to get done, um, in my tenure. Um, one of the biggest things was a facility. Without a facility, having a, a, um, a proper building, it's almost impossible to get a credit. We were lucky before that we did. Um, part of this rigor stands for your cells, for your, um, your holding, the holding area itself, for your booking area and for your evidence. We had an attic for our evidence, we had one room for our cells and holding facility. It, it became incredibly difficult to keep that accredited because we couldn't get policies that would say up to standards with their, with their standards. Every year they do a new standard, we're in the sixth edition, we're actually on the most latest edition of accreditation. So obviously, and the police station was a big factor in the town, pushed that. That was kind of what, what made me switch gears and go towards this. Um, and again, it wasn't just me. I, I'm, I'm here tonight to recognize the whole department. This is truly a collaborative effort. We, this couldn't be done with one person. This was a result of the board. The boards in the past, this board, um, as I was driving here, this part wasn't rehearsed, I just thought like, how did we get here? Um, and it was the boards in the past that started probably with your board, uh, it's like we got it a long time ago when we started changing things around here. Um, and the support that you gave me in this department to do things outside the box, the way we built the police station, the way we redesigned capital and our, our budget, um, the way we've created new positions around here, it all kind of led to this outside the, the box thinking. Uh, for a small town, you have to do that. Obviously, we don't have all the resources to do what bigger towns do. Just to let you know where we stand currently in Worcester County, there, there are sixty agencies that could be accredited agencies. Only ten are, and we are one of those ten now. Uh, when you go west towards New York, um, I can't even count how many there are, but there are only eight agencies. So from there we go. So from Worcester County on, where we are, there are only eighteen agencies that are credited. In Massachusetts, there are three hundred and fifty-one that are eligible, um, and only a hundred and eighteen are. So that tells you, take eighteen out, most of them are east of us, which you would expect. Um, so for, for our, our area, um, we are definitely ahead of curve, um, in set standards, you know, that people could follow. And I'd like to say that the apartment as a whole collaboratively has done that and the board has supported. We have, we have corporals now, which was something right outside the box that, that no one would have thought of doing. We actually, some people kind of said, what corporals, what is that? Now Westboro has corporals, Oxford has corporals, they're making a big initiatives. We, with the support of the board, a few years ago, um, Mike, you were part of that. We appointed a part-time lieutenant, which was something that was definitely outside the box, a retired officer now serving. Um, we wouldn't have been able to do this without him. He is our accreditation manager. Sergeant Hoare, our sergeant, is the assistant accreditation manager. So all these things collectively made this happen. Um, the boards of the past, this board and the team. So I just want to recognize the department for that, recognize the town, the board. Um, we'll hang this up in the lobby, it'll be something that we can be proud of. It's a three-year certification. So we'll, we have to keep up with it now. Our goal is obviously to keep passing this on generation to generation. So hopefully I'll do it a few more times and then hopefully whoever takes after me will keep this going. But I wanted to thank the whole department, um, especially I don't know.
Lieutenant and Sergeant, Sergeant.
They both were at the, uh, the meeting, they put a lot of sweat and effort into this. Um, I get the credit for making it happen, but they, that was actually made it happen. Um, so I, I just wanted to recognize their, their great efforts. Um, the other sergeants involved, everybody literally should be proud of this because everybody had a department. When the commission came down to do our assessment back in May, they said that of all departments they've done the past few years, we kind of, they said, no department they've seen has worked so well together to get this completed. In fact, we skipped the first step of certification. So usually, tell you what, this one. Usually they go certification. He was the one that actually pushed it and, uh, I wanted to get certified first and he said, you know what, let's just go for it.
The, when we started off, the, the first process was getting certified first i- in the fifth edition, which means, um, it's, it's the older edition. Meeting with the accreditation committee, we actually, they saw that our policies were going good and, uh, we skipped that certification and actually break, break accreditation, the sixth edition, which were one of the very few departments that actually are in the sixth edition. So we were ahead of the curve on that. Uh, so we got past the first step, because of course, in my opinion, it went so well and went right to accreditation.
Can I ask a really important question?
Sure.
Uh, the mic's right between us. Are you able to decorate your uniforms in any way or is that, oh, is there a way for you to stand out amongst? So I'm going to put it on the cruises, so we have pendulum, so we ought to inform the cruises straight for an accredited agency. And then one thing that's going to help that I know, Jeremy will like hearing, I'll get him the paperwork that comes from the commission. Uh, we get reduced liability insurance.
Oh, insurance. Uh, because of our policies are the best of the best, pretty much. There is no higher standard. So they, they give you a discount for that. Basically, there's going to be less liability because you follow a certain procedure and policies, so.
So we'll have that nice sticker on the cruises.
Yes.
It's a huge, huge movement.
I don't know if you guys want to get a picture with it or something for Facebook or?
I think, yeah, I think you want to, all of you, yes, yeah.
Think you want to put it by the seat? On the Facebook.
I know.
It's a big deal.
Yeah, thank you so much for explaining what a big deal it is.
Let's get the water in the middle.
Yeah.
We got to fix some of those.
Okay, that, that was very informative. All right, so, um, should we, uh, what should we do next? They're here as well. Okay, yes, we're going to try to, uh, call up people, groups who are here. So, uh, we're going to go to number eight, the Brothers of the Brush Santa Parade approval for December sixth. And I believe we have some guests here to speak to that.
They will be online.
Okay, perhaps online. Okay. So if there is someone online, I would, there we have John.
I am here to speak on behalf of the Santa Parade. It's, uh, going to be the same that we have done for the past few years. Festivities will start at six o'clock at Founder's Park, uh, with the middle school chorus, I believe, is coming down to sing. Uh, parade will start at seven from Northbridge Road and come down north to have cross, uh, Route sixteen and end on Main Street. We're hoping that we get some weather because if we don't, we're not getting fireworks, but it's looking pretty promising. So we're just asking for the approval from the board to hold the parade.
So can you clarify about the fireworks? Is that, do we need to have rain before we can have fireworks?
Yeah, so
Right.
I hate to say the word, but, um, there's a couple of chances of snow before then, so we should be good.
Okay, well, snow would be appropriate for the feeling as a parade.
As long as it's not the night of.
Um, I would move to approve the Brothers of the Brush Santa Parade on December sixth.
Discussion. All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. So we look forward to having another parade.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, all right, so then we will go to, um, number nine, which is appointments. Um, so we have, um, Assistant Treasurer Collector Candy LeBlanc. Is she here? Oh, and Tracy as well. Yes, we could have our treasurer collector join us as well.
Evening.
So Tracy, if you could let us know, like, uh, right, so we have a new, we have a candidate for this position. Would you mind introducing her?
So this is Candy LeBlanc, she's, um, the candidate we move forward for the Assistant Treasurer Collector. She served most of her, um, career in banking, so I think she'll be a great fit.
We had a great applicant pool, a number of candidates. Uh, Candy happened to be the first candidate, so that didn't need to, uh, but yeah, it was, um, both, uh, HR coordinator, John Neal, myself and Tracy in on the interviews. Candy was starting.
And does anyone have any questions?
Are you excited to see that office fill out?
I'm not going to get my steps in and go back.
Well, this, uh, yeah, it is wonderful that this position will be filled and I know, like, Tracy will welcome having uh, hope in the office, uh, like, it's been, it's been a lot of work on, on you, Tracy. So we know that, so we recognize that, so, um, and we are, we're thrilled that you'll be joining us. So, uh, yeah, any other questions or comments? So, uh, yeah, any other questions or comments? Okay, so I would be looking for a motion.
I moved to appoint Candy LeBlanc at the rate of twenty dollars, forty-one cents per hour pending a successful background check.
Further discussion? Alright, all in favor? Great, great, thank you.
We'll see a lot more.
So, uh, are you, you're being on the two. Next, we're going to, uh, talk about, um, candidates for the General Bylaw Review Committee. Um, and I think we have several, uh, candidates here with us, both in the room as well as online. Um, and so, uh, actually Jeremy, can you talk us through this? I know you, actually, you're welcome to please join us if you are here as one of the, uh, General Bylaw Review Committee. So applicants, please join us there and I know, actually, what, yes, I see.
We've got, we've got four candidates to appoint tonight, Carl Homel, Christina Campbell, Joe LaMoth, and Tom Marali. Um, the General Bylaw Review Committee, as this, uh, board is aware, has recently stood up, um, in terms of a charter posting vacancies and giving them a charge. Um, I interviewed these four candidates, um, since they're in the boards to interview folks with vacancies. Um, they're all involved in town government outside of this and a diverse, um. Diverse capacities, which I think really brings a, a great, um, set of skills to the committee. Um, we have seven vacancies in total, so we'll keep, um, we'll keep three up. Um, and, and, you know, continue to tell your friends if anyone wants to serve in this community with that role. Um, and, uh, we look forward to their ongoing work in advance of annual town meeting and continuing for, um, throughout, uh, crossing fiscal years.
Great, and then I guess we could, uh, ask questions of these applicants. I know Joanne, since you're here in the room, can you say a little bit about why, um. Why you want to be on this committee?
Well, I'm already involved in the town, the cultural committee, and, um, I wanted to find all the ways to get back to the town. And I just happened to be looking at the town website, seeing what vacancies were available, and I saw this and I said, oh, I like the challenge, so. Why not, so, um, and I think it's gonna be interesting to see what it entails, what it involves. To peel that, the layers of different things.
Thank you. Uh, anyone have any questions for Joanne? And then I guess I will ask Carl, uh, if you have same question to you, why, what, what brings you to this, uh, possible committee?
I, I moved to Mendon ten years ago and shortly after that started serving as the Conservation Commission. I've been the chair for a couple of years now. I've now fully retired from, uh, several decades in computer IT, risk assessment, paper pushing. Regulations, dealing with the Securities and Exchange Commission and, uh. My strength is in text, I can run a meeting, but I'm much, as, as some of the people have seen from my previous emails. I'm very good at analyzing text, uh, the recent conservation restrictions that, uh, we just. Uh, approved at the Springtown Meeting, I went through and worked with MetaComit and other people to make sure that. We solve the issues that we have had with previous, uh, conservation restriction in activities. So I'm looking forward to hearing from the town citizens, what they're interested in seeing, working with the select board. On what they expect that they want to have reviewed and in general tidying up paperwork.
Alright, thank you, as we're all, I think we're all looking forward to having those bylaws looked at in, in depth, uh, and. Um, so we don't, I believe we don't have the other applicants here, but I believe, yeah, Tom is online, Tom is online. Hi, Tom, so. Do you, yeah, same question to you, why, why do you want to be on the, uh, General Bylaw?
Um, well, my name's Tom Marali, I'm. From Mendon. For the past thirty-four years, born and raised. Uh, been involved in a few different things in town, I'm currently the town moderator. I, I've been on the Historic Commission, I'm on the CBA, uh, Economic Development Committee. I, I think I, um. Different roles in town government and also I'm employed in town government outside of Mendon. Um, I think I have a wide. Array of, of town experience that allows me to look at the impacts these bylaws have. I do agree that, that kind of a top-down look is important. And, you know, I, I wanna be part of that, especially with my role as town moderator, I think I bring a lot to the table. Um, and, you know, I, I think. I, I think there's definitely room for improvement in. You should be looking at these bylaws just to strengthen them and make them the best they can be, so, thank you very much for that.
Thank you. What's that? Okay, and then I believe Christina Campbell, we do not see online.
Yeah.
Or in the room, so but Jeremy will just mention who she is.
Certainly, Christina Campbell had a conflict tonight, uh, uh, she's involved in town government, um, Historic District Commission. Um, I believe the Historic Society as well, uh, she's not a, not a town board. Born and raised in Mendon and a recent law school graduate. Um, and I think she brings a lot of, a lot of great perspective to the, to the committee, um, like I said, I think it's a well-rounded group. Um, I was unable to connect, uh, before this meeting with the fifth candidate who was listed here, I was told that we could do that earlier. Um, uh, who's also involved in some town, um, boards and commissions, so, uh, once we can connect and give a little of that, uh, some other candidates for this.
Great, so any other questions? I think then we could, I would be looking for a motion and I believe, so we have, this will be, so there are. There will be seven, se- seven seats on this and so there, there will be, um, staggered, um. Term expirations, so one year, two year and three year, so, um. So I believe the, the motion, um, the suggested motion includes those dates, so that please include those.
Yes, my only question about that is, has that been synchronized with what people wish? So the people that are applying, if they're applying, do they want the one-year position versus the three-year versus the three-year?
It was not, it was applied from the town clerk, um, in the order which. So, um.
We could adjust them if there's some issue, but.
People are. Not ultimately bound to.
Right. So I'm moved to appoint, uh, Carl Homel and Christina Campbell to General Bylaw Review Committee to fill vacancies for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-seven. Joe LaMoth and Tom Marali to General Bylaw Review Committee to fill vacancies for two-year terms to expire June thirtieth, twenty-sixth. Contingent on completing ethics training if applicable.
Discussion?
I just wanna remind the town and the board that the reason that we started this was to review the bylaws. The reason why we need to review our bylaws is because a lot of them are old and some of them are conflicting and it makes it complex. For the town when they come to town meeting or special town meeting, uh, to deal with some of the language. And to deal with some of the effects of the changes of that language, I think we just had town meetings, so we all heard a lot about that. Uh, so this is a chance for a, a non-select board group. To give a educated recommendation to the board about what might need to be changed when it comes to town meeting time. So that's the general scope of this.
And as, as you, as you said, when it comes time to town meeting time, it will be. Town meeting where the voters of Mendon will decide about any bylaw changes, so. This, the new, uh, Bylaw Review Committee, or General Bylaw Review Committee will make recommendations to the board. Which we would then bring to the voters at town meeting, so no bylaw changes will happen without that process.
And, and I, I would also add that. Anyone who's watching this, who's had a thought about the change in the bylaws, this is the, the channel to do that. They can send that information to this committee, um, same thing with the department heads. Um, I talked to the fire chief, the police chief, um, and other department heads about changes they'd like to see that would require a bylaw. And this is a good opportunity to make that.
Great, and so, wait, uh, any further discussion? Oh, yes, Carl.
Yes, uh, one of the reasons why I was pushing for the creation of this commission. Uh, this committee is because as Conservation Commission Chair, I was caught up in a controversy regarding as a citizen position. Petition for a bylaw change that, uh, impacted CONCOM and the Planning Board. So as Jason said, one of my goals is that if citizens are concerned and they have an issue. They can come to us and we will help them carefully craft a position if we don't come up with it ourselves. To avoid that expense to the town of having to have town council advise things and refer it to the Attorney General and all that mess.
Thank you, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor? Great, great.
Thank you very much.
Service to our town. Stick, alright, so, uh, I believe we have, like, more appointments, um, from, uh, the Police Department, so in. Please join us again, Chief Kersey.
Speaking of outside box, I have something else for you. Something that the state police does, they don't do on a paid basis, or it's not exactly the program we're gonna be doing, something easy to approach Boston. Um, so around, it's getting me to really head to, get to start thinking about our succession planning. It's hard to get new hires, the applicant list is getting increasingly vast. Um, we're pretty much just shoveling off the ground from one department to another, we're not developing any. Um, so we'd like to start a cadet program that we, we've looked at for the past year or so, and it's a new program that we wanna start to. Get ready for future retirements, we have a few in line now that we know are coming. Some people are turning age sixty-five, they have to at that point. Um, so we're kind of excited to prepare for that, so we're not. Down to two or three officers, spending extra overtime that we don't need to be and looking for replacements that we can. We can hire and hope to be here a while, not just someone to lay over here in the next day. So, we're looking to start the police cadet program, um, this program is designed for college students, individuals targeting a future in law enforcement. Uh, this initiative provides participants hands-on exposure to law enforcement operations, including ride-alongs, community engagement. Training in CPR, first aid, basic law enforcement techniques. And under the mentorship of experienced officers, cadets can gain valuable skills and insight regarding the progress in public safety. The program benefits the department by increasing operational efficiency, supporting community outreach and reducing administrative burdens, appointing. Cadets, as paid employees, will allow them to take on more essential functions, a step enabling full-time, cease to focus on other priorities. Uh, further, the program serves a valuable tool for future recruitment, identifying and developing potential internal candidates for police positions. Uh, which will help us build a stronger, well-paid workforce for the future, ensuring the continued growth and success of this department. So right now, we're requesting the board approve the appointment of Nicholas Lucia from Fitzburg State University. And Harrison Quateroni, like I said, right, a mech dispatcher in part-time. Uh, as a part, as part-time, paid employees to continue serving in extension roles of cadets. Both have already volunteered countless hours of strong, shown strong dedication to the department. Moving forward with their appointments, we expect them to assist in critical operational areas, including prisoner watch, traffic control and supporting the information center. Uh, both cadets are certified in key areas, making them immediate assets to the department. Since we don't have a twenty-four-hour dispatch, right now, we try to maintain hours of eight to four every day. Um, right now Terry does that Monday through Friday, weekends, I have Mark Macino doing it, um, serving a dual role as a nurse management. But obviously they need days off, Mark can only work so many hours because he's retired. Um, so we do have gaps right now, but there aren't people there during the day. So this would be an added benefit where I can plug someone in there and continue to provide a service to the town, um, obviously at the same rate that one's getting. Um, additionally, officers, um, that always love doing prisoner watches. There's nothing physical with the prisoner watches, the way we design now is a watch, a watch and a screen, if something happens, you call the officer. So they provide. A more affordable option to than paying overtime, I don't mind paying overtime, happy to do it, but the officers don't always want. Uh, all of this, we've worked with the police union to, um, get this in effect. Um, it will be affecting anything with their union contract, there are more, these people will be used as a last resort for the, those functions. Um, and actually will prevent the officers from being forced in, which is a different, no one likes being forced into a bar in the morning, especially when someone's willing to come in and do it on their. So that's, this is the program we'd like to start, these are the first two appointees of it, and I, uh, just request your support for this program.
So outside of business, outside of that eight to four time, if somebody needs assistance, someone comes to the door, just remind the town. So whoever's out on duty that day needs to come back, right, so.
So we, uh, we have a dual redundancy fiber system that goes to the station. Um, that monitors cameras and speakerphone, so when you come to our lobby, you go into it, you go on speakerphone, the neck knows you are there. They'll speak to you, what's your need, a buzzer, and also come and see you between the hours of four a.m. Those are the hours that we see at least some on the traffic, but those are the hours we've kind of cut down. During busy hours, we can monitor it, uh, we have noticed that certain days, we do have a lot of traffic, so we have extended the hours here and there when we can with a staff person. Just as.
So, but it's better to keep the officer on the road during the day than to come back and.
Yeah.
Did you have a lot of, um, interest from both to try to step into this type of?
We've been doing internships.
Yeah.
So that's where it's developed from, um, so as we keep doing the internships, we're hoping that's what we file into it. We have to put it out there to say we're starting a huge cadet program, because obviously, if we get too big, that takes too much resources from us, a full-time person. So we'd like to start and try the basis and look at the positions and.
This is voluntary, these two positions?
Uh, it's open both, so there's certain parts of voluntary, voluntary positions of it, then there are certain parts that we can fill shifts with. So that's why if we point them at the read, I think we have, that we put in the appointment, we can backfill Terry.
Is it budget neutral?
Yeah, it's budget, and actually, this wasn't possibly costing, so if I had to watch this, it also don't.
That's the general pay for.
Is that the rate of twenty-five?
Yeah.
So if you want, you want a motion?
I, I think, right, the motion would need to include that rate, right, yeah.
So. I moved to appoint Nicolòlo Chia and Harrison Quateroni, uh, to cadets for the Mendon Police Department, a rate of twenty-five dollars per hour.
Discussion? All in favor?
Oh, wait, I do have one discussion.
Oh, yes.
True.
Is this link, I like, are you linking this to Explorers, are you still doing Explorers or?
Uh, we haven't done Explorers in years now.
Alright, since it's a separate.
It's completely separate, we may do it again in the future, but we, uh. Just in half fee with accreditation, everything else going on, they just have manpower to handle it, and, and exactly, officers do that at their own time. So if you're learning things to begin with, it's kind of tough on their own time, probably have some.
Nice, now.
Alright, any, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I.
Alright, great, so, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing, uh, this to us and I hopefully that we, um. Offer some relief to the department to have those extra, um, bodies.
Then we can do the next one. First cadets ever.
Oh, so we have another, another item on you.
Yep.
There's also you.
Yeah.
So, uh, for them, and includes Department Traffic Constable.
So Joe, the resident of the town. Fifteen years, two thousand and seven, uh, used to be a part-time officer in the town of Oakdale. Do his business, discontinued doing that a few years ago, um, but had all the training, a police officer, uh, currently has all the training that you need to be a traffic constable. Um, being a resident in town, had prior law enforcement experience, um, and us being short on being able to fill details. Um, he had asked if he was able to do it, um, he went through the, the training courses that you need to be a traffic constable, so at this time. Um, I'd like to have him point as a traffic constable, there is no pay rate associated with that, um, but that would allow him to, um. Relieve us, we, we have some details that we can't fill instead of canceling the contracts. Because there have been times where we sold the contracts into the work, as we can't give anybody air from end to end.
And by then, the pay rate is driven by the collective bargaining. So there's no pay rate that can be voted on.
Uh, there is no pay rate, it's just a.
See, a point doesn't have to improve, kind of, reasons based on by the contract.
And I will say, um, earlier, the treasurer, the Assistant Treasurer Collector was appointed, that rate is also driven by contract, that is step-based. So that's why the same rate was important, because that's a step that the meeting comes to that, but the detail rate form for what outside vendors pay the details.
It's, it's a variable, it changes depending on the detail of the time, they work, so, it's a very fluid rate.
Great, any more questions? So I'd be looking for.
I, I would, uh, yeah, I see. Ah, thanks, Joe, for doing this. I move to appoint Joseph Hood, traffic constable for the town of Mendon Police Department.
Okay.
Discussion? All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Post. Great.
Welcome on board.
Thank you.
Some patient scouts I see.
First cadets up, down and then.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
I wasn't in this, it was just me. It's okay.
It's kind of like some kind of gender enough.
Well, yeah.
Hey, Jason, nice meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it, congratulations.
So I believe, I believe, yeah, ten, so we just want to scout bottles. We have some. My turn, so next one. Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, Ed Chang, from Stone Mass, from Mendon, like a Sony assistant scout master. We're here, we, we would buy a can of bottle drives, fundraiser for our scout troop. And we recently came into donating stuff from, it's these closed drop boxes from the salary, I mean. We were asking permission from the board, we're going to paint them, and send us all the models to report floor, and then we want to place them. In the town, we have, we've talked to Dan Byd, but one of the memorial field fire chiefs has said we could do one at the fire station, we were hoping to place one here. The third one here, would provide for the community a place for them to drop off their redeemable cans and bottles. We'd maintain them and empty them as often as needed.
Do we know where we're going to put it?
So, yeah, I guess I did have one question, which is, have you been in contact with the Friends of Mendon Elders? Because they also have a can and bottle drive that is a pretty significant fundraising source for them. And I know they're, they're quite close to us, so like, I don't want to, I don't want to be in direct competition for, for those bottles and cans. So like, have you been in contact?
We have not, we have not, we've always just been, we've been doing it for, I don't know how long they have, but I haven't, they had no problem with that.
Right.
So we just, we just came into these and, you know, we have a lot of people who come to ours and they've said.
Right.
We don't know where to put these, I mean, we tell them that there's one at the senior center.
Right.
Except two bucks, we have answered that to people.
I mean, it does make a lot of sense to me to have them at the fields, because, you know, people are, you know, drinking their drinks, so like, it's, it makes a lot of sense. I don't know if there is a place that makes sense to put it, where there, you know, a lot of people.
Can I, can I suggest that we have them ask the, go into inspectional services and ask the board of health? Because they are cans and bottles, and they might want to ask them over there on the other side if they have a suggestion, since they're there all the time, it's just a thought.
Because this is going to be a permanent fixture, correct?
Well, they're movable, they're not that big, they're not the giant.
Well, I mean, you're not going to take them out in six months.
No, no.
Be there.
We were thinking, we were thinking it would be a benefit, like, they have one at the fire station, one at the station for the local officers, people at the town. Their stuff is just, they want to bring them in and drop them, and then people, residents, you know, easy access for residents.
It's good.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure that it's on campus in a place that's satisfactory to our TA, and if it's going to be near the police station, satisfactory to the police station.
Right.
That's it, like.
We would put, we would put it wherever you, whatever people wanted, so we could duck it out back, hide, you know, whatever, we're, we're pretty flexible.
I like the idea of talking to the board of health, I mean, they might be aware of where there are a lot of bottles and cans coming in.
Right.
I mean, I think, yeah. Capturing them where people have them is a great way to also, you know, reduce littering as well.
Right, we're hoping to get the word out, so people know where they are, so whichever spot is convenient for them, then you just drop them. So that's where we're kind of spreading the model, that we figured public building, public area is usually a good spot.
You have a question, Brandon?
Yeah, for the purpose of the motion, rather than come back, should we, is that something, Jeremy, that you could coordinate that conversation?
Yeah, you can move through the boy scout donation box at town home locations, and then. Yeah, and then we can work together with the police chief. Because if you put it at the fire station and realize there's not a lot of foot traffic there, and you want to move it to in town, shoot a summer or something.
Or even where, even down at the highway, where people bring their.
Where they bring their recycling, every Saturday, yeah.
Right.
Pretty nice to the senior center, which is where people bring, I mean. I, I saw.
That's why I like the department.
This year, so like. It's, you know. Sort of want to protect that for them and not be in direct competition with that.
But at the same time, I'm, I'm pretty sure Troop Forty-four has done a bottle and can draw since its inception.
Yes, yes, yep.
We usually do it at Clough, right, like that.
Yes, we used to do it right here before you guys changed the party plot layout and stuff, and then. So as long as I've been in the troop, which has been. Well, it's been a while, we've been doing it a lot by.
But those drives weren't in perpetuity, they were, they time-bound, right?
Yes.
Right, so this sounds like it's going to be more in perpetuity.
Well, we're still going to, we're still going to do what we call our processing, you know, we actually have a container, a storage container where we move stuff, some people will give us stuff off. The drives are when we bag them all and turn them in. We're still going to do the drives for the community. But typically, what we've been doing now is a lot of people just give them to us at random times, and we store them at our storage container. And then bring them all to Clough where people drop off some, and we process the ones we have. So that's what we would do with these, is we would empty these, bring them to our holding area, then when we do our all the drive, we just bring them all in, sort through them then, is how we do it. So it's about, it takes us about six, six, seven hours, you know, on a Saturday to go through everything we have, and then that includes where they could drop off.
I think it does make sense to, if we can do it to, you know, determine the exact location later, and then. That gives some flexibility to move it, if, if it turns out, if a better location is identified.
And we're certainly, if we put it somewhere, people decide they don't like it, it's a nice way, they don't want it there, we're happy to move it somewhere else. We're not flexible. Want to work with the community.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the last thing would just be to make sure, like, make sure they don't attract animals, you know, beer or soda being poured in there.
Hence, hence the discussion.
Yeah, 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 no, I know.
Yeah, and we can have.
It only took me ten minutes.
And so, yeah, any other, other questions? Yeah. Anyone want to make a?
I move to approve the boy scout donation box located in conjunction with the town administrator's office.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Good, thank you very much.
Hanging out for an hour, thank you very much.
They're knocking off square gas.
Yeah, there you go, nice job.
Have a great.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, so do you have additional? Invite Chief Kersey back up? It's, I mean, I know you can't see anything. Or at least you didn't sit up at the table.
Yes.
So, forty-nine, the gentleman's club is. We had some stipulations from private boards, private police chiefs of regulations that we want to see down there. I've been contacting Mr. Panari, the owner, and I've been down there, toured the facility, I've looked at it through the construction, he's been great to work with, he's cooperative, he's. He's trying to run a good business, he's trying to be a good business person. Part of that stipulation, I think, from previous chief and previous boards was to have details there every single night, details every day. We have a hard enough time filling details at the end zone these days. There's too much going on.
How often do you do details at the end?
The end zone, we used to do it every second. You don't anymore. I've talked to the owners over there, we sporadically fill them. I have talked to him about, he can just hide most security. You know, for a price, maybe to break it through most security, guys, just hide the security, we'll monitor it. That's what I did on the side, we can monitor it, and if it becomes a problem again, we'll talk about details. And Mr. Vaz is, and Anna's constantly in contact with me, once a month, we talk about it, how it takes going down there. What I like to recommend is a new initiative for the gentleman's club, kind of treating like end zone. We'll monitor it. He has my cell phone number, I have his cell phone number, I told him he was a problem at two o'clock in the morning, calling, we'll address it these first few months. He already is going to have security there, they're going to be running tight security, there are cameras everywhere, they have a room where someone's just watching the camera, it's like every aspect of that place is on camera. If they do get in trouble, they can, or need us, they'll call us, I can handle the business in town. But I think we should give them the opportunity to run their business efficiently on their own. And we'll stay in contact with them, I'll stay in contact with them on a regular basis, right now, weekly and then monthly. And if we determine police presence is needed, then we, we address that, but I don't think it's fair to just make business all of a sudden providing details every single night.
I, I think it's wise, given the history, to treat them like every other business.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't know why we'd treat them any differently, so that's why I'm requesting to rescind the previous boards, I don't know if you were on the board back then, but rescind the previous boards. Requests.
So was it a, do you remember how it was requested, like, is it?
Granting it, negotiated through all lawsuits and due ways. So it really's in your hands, because I didn't make the stipulation.
My, my suggestion is to, I'd like to make a motion to, to delegate the. Delegate the decision of, of any kind of police presence requirement to the chief of police.
I can talk to council.
For, for.
I can talk to council too, it was McCarr at the time, I can call McCarr, we can talk to him, see if there's anything legally besides that we have to do also. But I think it's just in place of delegation.
So we delegate it to you at forty-nine Milford Street.
Okay, we're specific to the business.
It's specific to forty-nine Milford Street.
Second.
Discussion?
And we, we don't do this for the drive-in either, right?
Well, we used to, we used to have it for the drive-in, we used to have it for a lot of places, but, you know, as, as technology has progressed. And actually, even cell phones, I mean, because it was no way to contact law enforcement quickly. We didn't have, we didn't, I mean, the police station was locked, we had no dispatchers in there, a lot of things, but as technology has advanced, then. You know, it's made it so that it's easy to summon, summon the police if required. And with, with surveillance, and again, as I say, with the, with the history of this, I think it's proper to treat it like every other business and all of the other ones in town. It's up to the discretion of the chief of police, and I, I think we should maintain that same discretion here.
My personal and professional recommendation angle, and I don't think we should make people do these type of things unless we have identified an issue and need to address it. We shouldn't pre-plan an issue and make people pay money to have aid security. You know, kind of, I hate to say it, but I suppose we're going to work with you.
That's well said, I agree.
Further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you, so in your hands.
One other thing that I mentioned to you, I told them to reach out to you directly, or directly to you, Jeremy, is the other stipulation they have about alley parking, they want to talk about. I told them I'm not getting involved with that, that would be between you, you and them, so if this comes to you or want to, I just want to. That, maybe here, but I guess part of it was required valley parking for everything, they're trying to eliminate valley parking or do a certain ninety cent oldness or a point that was made by the board that.
Well, do we, do we know if, if, did they, they sign an agreement to that effect?
They would, so I told them to talk to the lawyers, and the lawyers reached out to Jeremy Town Council. It's just so at least you, you know it's aware, that's the place to tell you all at once without violating what you mean, so.
They have multi-layer, I mean, you can see they have multi-layer parking going over there.
I, I, I told them, come up with a plan and present it to you, and the worst you can say is no.
Right.
So you are right now.
So maybe a follow-up, Jeremy, would be for the board to get a copy of everything that happened decision-wise back then, so we can refresh, sorry.
So, yeah.
If you want, I can reach out to you and we can now, and talk to you.
I think it was discussed, I think it was discussed when we passed it for traffic, so. Because that was, that was the first time we talked about the, the whole parking issue, parking in the back of the building.
Yeah.
So they have an anticipated opening date?
Right now, they're not a hundred percent sure, they're shooting in the middle of December, it could be January. I've been in there a week and a half ago. It's, it's set up, it's not stopped, and they're still looking for additional points, so that's how quick they can. Before they actually open in there, anticipate the opening is going to be four days a week, so that they'll be open. It's interesting, this. It's in Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I think. So.
Do you know if they have another gentleman's club? Is this their only one?
I don't.
Like, are they experienced in this? This is why I need all this.
I know it's been working with other agencies, I don't know the particulars behind it, I know, I don't know if there's a vested with it, I don't know.
But it sounded like you got a general sense of trust and.
Yeah, he's, he's, I know, I don't know if he owns it, but he's been reaching out to other establishments, it's just like I've been reaching out to other chiefs.
So he's got some.
But he's doing all the right things, I want to business, so I, I think like an analyst. I think that's going to be right.
Yep.
Actually, Jeremy.
Thank you.
It's chief. See how good Thanksgiving is.
Nope.
Hey, hey.
Dabble, dabble.
So.
Did you do it on purpose?
Are we moving on to twelve, we surplus, because I believe John Dudley is here. So, John Dudley, we're going to talk about, and twelve, the subway surplus items.
Yep, so I have two items that I'm asking to declare surplus, the first one is a tire machine. I am not even sure if this works, it has been sitting in this shop for years, and it's time to get rid of it. So I'm asking to get that declared surplus, the second item would be the nineteen-sixties white Hercules motor, which was the motor that came off of our old leafback. Now that we have the new leafback, I'm looking to get rid of that old motor as well. Trying to clean things up.
Yeah, John, can you remind us the status, the functional status of that Hercules motor?
That Hercules, the first, the Hercules motor was rebuilt. It runs, but it does not keep oil pressure, so I believe the oil pump, there may be an issue with the oil pump, which, if, if it's declared surplus, I will list that in the listing on me this a bit.
Okay, clear.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's clear for you all that are watching, declaring something surplus doesn't mean you can throw it in the trash, I mean, as we go through our regular process of, of trying to recruit some sort of funds for it. So we'll have an additional surplus likely in the next meeting for the existing street sweeper, so we can trade that in as part of the.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, so then I guess we'd be, I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the highway surplus items, Amco Tire Machine, serial number four, four, six, seven, and nineteen sixty white Hercules motor, serial number twenty-three L fifty-six, eight, six, eight, eight, as discussed.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Great, thank you, John.
Thanks for cleaning up, John.
Thank you again.
Face that way.
Thanks, John.
Over on this bill. Which, actually, I see items thirteen, debrief from town meeting, should we move to that, or do we want to take care of the minutes first?
Sure.
Let's get, let's go back, yeah, go back to the minute, so. We had.
Well, I'll make a motion if you'd like.
Sure.
I'll move to approve October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, November first, twenty twenty-four minutes. Second.
Discussion? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you. And then there were also items six, seven minutes, meeting minutes for circulation, which we will vote on next time. Okay, great, all right, so jumping back to number thirteen, debrief from town meeting, Jeremy, did you want to, like, talk us through that?
Yeah, and so this is kind of. This was mainly on there in case something didn't go as planned, and how. this was mainly on there in case something didn't go as planned and how we would um, address the resultant need um, as once where everything went to um, you know, satisfaction to them um, as the board had planned before the meeting. So uh, first of all, I want to thank you all for um, your participation and your kind of patience in my first time for town meeting case, first time for town meeting here. Um, I definitely thought we we learned a couple of things, you know, to make sure the man gets one side of the chair, gets one side of motions and uh, you know, just silly uh, procedural things like that, so we can, we can continue with more a little bit quicker. Um, uh, I wanted to discuss a little bit, because somebody brought it up, some folks brought it up to me about um, the consent agenda, consent calendar that we had from beginning. So um, ideally, that would be a discussion between the board and the moderator as well ahead of time um, to make sure that um, individual pieces, which we wanted to have, you know, discussion on, even if they were uncontroversial, we want to bring attention to, would would um, remain as a distinct item on said calendar. Ultimately, it's the town moderator's decision on how to take these, but the town moderator is informed by the, by my opinion as a board. So it's my anticipation that going forward, decisions like that would be made in advance, well in advance, not the Friday before or Monday meeting um, to be able to to be able to decide them. So again, one of the less clear. Um, additionally, Katie was able to overshadow Dan Byer and his um, production of town meeting. Um, so one of the things we had discussed, um, setting the date of town meeting, um, was um, you know, individual availability. Um, I wanna make sure we build in some redundancies in town operations where we don't just have, um, you know, where we're not just relying on one person to to perform. But that's the interest. Um, and we didn't have to ask town council anything, so that's great. Uh, there wasn't some conference stuff that I appreciated um, the the kind of spirited discussion from folks and I thought, I thought especially in the way it's an ADU pilot.
Yeah.
I thought it was great.
Yeah.
And I wanna thank you specifically for the level of information you provided on the floor. Was unbelie- unbelievably helpful and specific and it just, I think it just, I guess I'll speak for what I think it made, made us look prepared and informed. So I think that kind of
Right, I think.
helped with the voting and.
Right, especially.
And I wanted to add, if I had a two different residents come up right after the meeting. Matter of fact, I I thought you might have heard one of them was still standing there. One of them actually is an attorney. And said to me how how happy and impressed he was that uh, that the town administrator was anticipated other the questions everybody was gonna ask and answer them before some people even do they wanted to ask them.
Jeremy's good at that, like, sometimes, yeah, I'll be like, what about, he's like, oh, further down, okay, got it, thank you.
One thing I would suggest that we we started doing is, um, that that, and it doesn't always work with this amendment, but I, what what I did was I pre-signed all the motions and gave a copy of the motions to the to the town clerk, so she already had them. So you know, the town moderator doesn't have to do a ninja move every time.
Right.
Then over to.
Sort of a combination there. I think there were, there were a lot of moving parts on Monday, so that
Yep.
those copies weren't totally ready until right before.
And I just wanted two, two quick things. One is I point to Jeremy, also wanna make sure Katie realizes I'm pointing at her too, so it's a dual acknowledgement of of getting us ready. The the other thing, the last thing I'd wanna say is the the update on free cash, any sort of business update at the beginning, that goes, that mitigated many questions. Balances, how much, where to come from. Topic for consideration. I wouldn't, I would like to suggest we start doing a business update prior to any town meeting. Maybe ATM is a year in review, preparing.
That's not, this is a work in progress for me, literally for years. And that, what you did, right, giving that information upfront.
Yeah.
Like you said, I mean, that was the crux of why ninety percent of the people that come there, come there. And when you gave it, it just, it mitigated a lot of questions.
We probably need to work with the town, the moderator to gain his agreement on it, but I think it's something to consider, because I think uh, even an update on the things, a a look back, this is what we've done, this is why we did them, this is the investment we made. That can only smooth the road when we're suggesting that we're increasing your, you know, the average tax rate. We just saw it jumped quite a bit.
Right.
Because we wanna make these future investments, you know, so just a ten-minute summary of where we are financially and business plan-wise, I think would be a good, good way to kinda.
Also, that thing we noted on, here's the tangible, the act of that from.
Right.
So Oxbridge does this really great thing, at least for their town meeting. It's probably a very page packet with every article, discussion on the article, select boards vote to support, whatever presenting bodies vote to support, FinCom if it's responsible, um, vote on it and some small discussion on the vote. Um, and I think it really gives folks who attend town meeting that context that um, before they even show up, because um, if you're just reading the warrant, or even if you did read the walkthrough document that we posted Thursday before, um, there's not a lot of contextualization, or if you're just reading the warrant, there's not the specifics, there's not even the dollar.
Right. Well, the, but the issue is that we we've always tried to give as much as possible, but the reality is that it seemed like there was some crisis management in that process in the past, because we were always trying to get there. It it kind of goes to even the discussion we had a couple of months ago, when should we schedule that that meeting? And some folks wanted to do it sooner, and I knew, look, we need time, you know, there's a rhythm to this, this. And I I think e- e- everything everybody's suggesting is great, and that would be great too, but again, it just, it takes a lot of lead time to get all of that in place, because all of the boards and committees have to have their discussions and votes and decisions in with enough time so that Katie or whoever else can actually put that all together. That would, that would be the ideal situation. So while the information is in people's hands, you know, before, then you have the moderator that does the walkthrough the week before online. And if that document was ready then, so we could go through all of that, then it would be fantastic.
Does some, so it's, that was an aspirational document.
Yes, that's a, that's a good.
Yeah. I only worry, yeah. Bandwidth, please.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and yeah, bandwidth and timing. Yeah. So, but yeah, and I also appreciated uh, Jeremy, your your knowledgeable responses about the retirement, the OPEB, there were, there were a number of follow-up questions there that I think were potentially, some of them were, I think, outside the scope of the article, but you were able to bring in your your knowledge and and give answers, uh, like thorough answers. I really appreciate that, so.
One thing I just brought up and didn't like hammer on is that fifty thousand dollars on a five million dollar liability does kind of seem small, but we're also paying tens of thousands of dollars a year in carrying costs, like they're right, there's, so that fifty thousand is in addition to what we're paying to keep.
You did mention it, it was just a short piece compared to.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I mean, it was, it was really helpful to have that, you know, that you have that information just based on your prior knowledge. So that was not, I know that wasn't like in the prepared discussion, because it was, those were sort of questions that were on top, I don't know. You anticipated them, or at least you already knew.
That's the meaning of hiring for a bond ready. Certain questions.
Thank you for that.
Well, OPEB always creates quizzical looks on a lot of people's faces.
Yeah.
I guess, on the topic of the consent calendar, I thi- I did appreciate that it moved things along quickly. Um, one thing that I did miss the discussion on was that uh, the the ten thousand on the fields, which part of the motivation for that was to publicize that we have this new uh, committee that we're trying to form, but we still haven't gotten any, have we had anybody yet?
Uh, I've talked to the boards who.
Just one person. Oh, one, okay. Well, that's, hey, that's, that's a big increase. Yay. Okay, well, that's good. So that was, that was the only one that came to mind that I'm like, oh, we missed, we missed the opportunity to have that really discussion point with a captive audience of, you know, engaged citizens who come to meetings. Um, and there, maybe some of them are watching right now. We are looking for people who are interested in joining the new uh, Fields Committee. What did we call it? Fields.
Recreation.
Recreation Fields Committee, thank you. Uh, but anyhow, it I thought the um, the meeting would smooth it and so, yes. Thank you, Katie, thank you, Jeremy. And uh, thank you, Tom, who's not on there anymore, and um, but, and Ellen, and and Dan, and all the other many people that helped um, get it together, so. And I did watch the flickers.
Yep.
BJ's done so much. What's that?
Up in the shot.
Okay. So were there any other town?
Yeah, anyone watching.
No, no, that was all, um, I was, I was disappointed that the uh, after my plea to rescind the appropriation to Enterprise Fund, that was not unanimous, though.
Oh.
But you haven't been to a meeting.
Keep in mind, there are, there is a, there's a a static number of no's.
Right.
That always.
I think that there's some flickers that are broken and they always do not.
Has anybody seen a unanimous?
Never.
Never.
Yeah, so.
But I don't, I don't think it's the picket.
So, yeah.
Even things like those are right, things that are completely non-controversial.
Think that, except I've heard stories about other towns. Yeah. Uh, great, uh. All right, oh, yes, and also just in terms of the town meeting, I was like happy that, right, some of those big requests that we talked about, the street sweeper, I was glad that 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 got supported at the pool barn. Um, so.
What what was, I think was very helpful with that one in particular, you know, there was some questions, but then when the, when the FinCom chair spoke up and said, you know, we went through all of these things, we talked through all of these, and Jeremy and I had a conversation offline about when I was the FinCom chair and would do, because I would do the discussions, I would try to build into it, all anticipate those questions and talk about that right up front. So the people who were sitting, ready to get up to the microphone, have their questions answered, because it's it's easy to anticipate some of the, I mean, three hundred and fifty thousand bucks is a lot of money for a piece of equipment, and do you really need it when they think it's only twice a year, but it's not really twice.
Right, but I think, I think they think like two days a year, but it takes, you know, so, so a lot more.
Michael Craig said something really important when he got up there. He said, um, you know, this is, I think he said something like, this is fifteen hours deliberation before we got here. And just thinking, you mentioning him and then thinking about what he said and then thinking about what you said about we should have some sort of discussion for the town, but what I was thinking a lot during the town meeting, I think that's during every town meeting, is that the language is elaborate and it's intentional, be, you know, because it's legal language. And a lot of the discussion can can be hard to follow if you're not studied on it. And so unless you're us, you're probably not sitting through fifteen hours of deliberation. And so if we could find a way to summarize it, summarize that deliberation, like Mike was saying, so that it was presentable to the town members, that they didn't have to ask questions that we didn't give them answers to, that would be helpful.
The document that you talked about, that I think that Oxbridge uses, do they have anything sort of like, you know, the legalese translated into like.
Like, if you, like, this will happen, if you vote, yes, this will happen.
Because I, I agree, that would be really useful, because sometimes people just, right, they don't, they don't have the time to really process all of the.
Yeah, I don't remember, a member of the um, community said something about like, this is going to, of course, go through the purchasing process, like, that's stuff that people don't know. You know, so they're thinking that just there's somebody's going out to buy a piece of, but it's not how it works.
We do have some knowledgeable townspeople who come up and ask.
Sure, yes.
Good questions.
So this is Oxbridge's reports. Yeah, yes. So it has uh, vote required, which uh, we had, uh, the moderator, the clerk and chair had a list from um, council about each, are each individual mark articles and what their vote required was, uh, but it'll be helpful to um, show this to folks as well. Um, and then it has the legalese language to see if the town will, um, and then some commentary and funding source. Same here. Um, there are charters or their bylaws are at least a little different, where the town manager is empowered in a number of things. Uh, so that's why I have a sponsor. Uh, but then even down here, um, finance committee gets a smaller uh, commentary section. So it's um, I think it's, I think it's really robust and Brandon said it's aspirational right now, you know, so, but if we can take kind of the document that we used during the walkthrough, which had the legalese, the motion, and then some, and turn it into something that can be
Right.
more widely.
And right, many, many of these articles, variations on them will come up each, each meeting, right? Some are, some are uh, one time, but a lot of them are like annual or even, you know, I know, you know, um, the special town meeting, the transfers into um, stabilization and um, capex. Those are like, you know, some of them, I guess, won't need to be revisited as often, so.
You can see, I just happened to stop on OPEB.
Yeah, a hundred thousand dollars liabilities. I mean, a hundred million dollars, sorry. Hundred million, wrong comma.
Transfer three fifty, seven times we transfer, liability is a hundred, which is twenty times. Wow, so it's, 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 the numbers.
Well, when we first started, when it came up on the radar, the discussion was, it was for the bond rate, because it was the acknowledgement was.
You gotta do something.
Right. And as long as you're doing some kind of a good faith effort based on what your revenue is, and putting something in there would help with the bond rate.
So I was writing uh, part of the financial policies today, and there's not a lot on OPEB, so I wrote that um, the contribution to open a trust fund shall be um, no less than the contribution a year prior, plus the increase in the general fund year.
That makes sense.
Some boxes. Something else I I wanted to mention, I didn't wanna open up a can of worms there, but you, the, the OPEB requirement, really, when you think about that, that health insurance that goes, it's a bridge, right, to Medicare from when they retire to when they get to Medicare range, I I believe.
And it's on the Medicare supplement.
Yes. So we're paying, you know, we're required to pay fifty percent. The town's actually paying seventy-five. So I I I think that's something else to consider too about those monies. You know, where where should those monies be going? Should we really, should we be continuing to pay seventy-five percent and maybe just pay fifty percent and take that that delta and put it into OPEB? You know, it's just.
Is that what our liability is calculated off of, the seventy-five percent?
It's part, well, it's fifty, it's part of that, it's part of.
At some point, was there an insurance advisory committee? I believe that there.
There was. Yeah, it has a part of it.
Okay, because I mean, I wonder like that, but it seems like it would be, I'm able to put that question to them.
Right.
Your advisor? Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so yes.
All right, so any other points about town meeting? Thank you. And then ARPA update?
Um, so uh, last meeting, um, rescinded uh, allocations into uh, the leaf vacuum replacement and water study phase two. Uh, we have um, a few uh, funds with some dollars, uh, over at Rescue One Replacement, uh, highway dump truck power pickup, which has some radios, some equipment, some some lighting that we're still gonna get done, so I'm also those department heads to make sure we have that committed by the end of December. Um, so if they're not, I don't have a solid commitment by our last December meeting, our last meeting to rescind and allocate that into a fund for general fund. We'll come up with the terms and we can use general, general fund expenditures into it. Um, which probably will happen in the renovation phase one punch list too, because I don't have that committed to a contract. Um, and you voted for Parkfield Lighting at ten thousand dollars. So the two updates, uh, employee and volunteer programs, so uh, we received our apparel in, really well received. Things looked really nice. Uh, you might have seen town clerk Conan Agro with her polo on at town meeting on Wednesday, so that's from that, that batch of things. Um, so that, I thought that was great. Um, Katie and Ellen worked on planning holiday party, so we'll have this at the front of the agenda the next time. Um, but we are going to Gallowards um, at South Spix um, on Friday, December twentieth. Didn't want a Friday party, of course, we're kind of late in the holiday planning game and we only had a few dates left, so it was a Friday or Sunday. And uh, so it'll be five to nine on December twentieth. It'll be open to the public in terms of a meeting agreed of your local officials. Uh, boards will be specific, boards and committees will also be specifically invited. It will be a cash bar. Um, and so we're using our funds to pay for the room rental, pass orders to at ties of stations, things like that. It's not a dinner. Uh, there's no sit, there's no plate down the buffet. Um, but I think it'll be a great appreciation for employees and folks volunteering at the time, um, and then their families and other community. And I think we'll, we'll advertise it and have Galiford's work something out, but they have discounted, um, rates for nighttime.
Oh, yeah, they have their festival, I don't know if they have the Festival of Lights again.
Yeah.
What's that?
The Winter Festival.
Okay, I think, yeah, it might vary year to year, but it was, it was nice, I went, went with my daughter.
So, yeah, I believe they have discounted, discounted rates for attendees to attend that, so.
And we're doing, we're doing five, five to nine?
Five to nine. The one-year-old, so we'll be meeting before nine, but he'll be there. Um, so there is, um, remaining unallocated almost fifty-three thousand dollars worth of, worth of market funds, um, as we're. For member, we, uh, I did not suggest additional allocations pending what happened at town meeting. Um, the one allocation that I had suggested was for the TextMyGov application, um, which was that low threshold, uh, low, low fine or technical literacy, um, uh, communication solution, um, almost like a four one one. Uh, that was at eighty-five hundred dollars, and involves the first year, it involves the implementation and getting us through June thirtieth, and then the whole first year. So it will be committed to a contract, um, so we'll be able to, to use it going forward. Uh, besides that, I didn't have a specific recommendation, I wanted the board to talk through some things that were priorities to you all. Uh, or if we wanted to use it for general government expenses, just, um, allow for free cash essentially at the end of the year, this is essentially what the state did with their ARPA funding, they took restricted dollars and threw, restricted in time, not restricted in use, because it was revenue based for that as well. Uh, and essentially turn that into unrestricted money at the end of the time period by doing general expenditure, so that's also, um, availability, so then certified free cash next September would be.
Oh, is there an update on the, um, library evening, because I know that, that, has that been contracted?
Um, it's been bid, so there's a, there's a walkthrough, a site visit on Friday, this Friday, it's due December fourth. Uh, so it's been advertised, um, central register, combined in favor on our website, um, and it will, uh, so visitor due December fourth. And part of the advertisement said, this is being funded with American Rescue Plan money, and a contract needs to be entered into before September.
Great, okay, but potentially there will be some, something left over from the amount there as well.
Um, so.
So we'll have like one, one more meeting after that, where, uh.
So I think, I think we said with the motion, I'll take a back, I think it was library paving improvements, library improvements.
Right.
So if there's a fractional couple hundred dollars left, couple thousand dollars left, uh, I would ask Andrew to enter into a landscaping contract for the spring or something to be able to use that.
Okay.
Or do something with that slab.
That space in the back.
Space in the back.
We just need to have it under contract before.
I would probably hope that, I have a thought around, uh, uh, a use, and that is actually, it might be CMRPC, but have somebody come in and actually review our town on parcels, our land.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
Right, and then Jack Hunter's, I, I met with his biologist, because I wanted her to show me the GIS stuff that's available to us, and, uh, he approached me and said, CMRPC could probably give us a high-level data dump of all of our parcels to say, this is sort of what it's, could be used for. But following up, when I said last time, professional services, when I thought about all the stuff that's out there in the capital program, the common denominator is, if we want to do something where it's fire station, library expansion, senior center, community center, all these things, it all comes back to where, right, and where's the best, you know, so best fit in terms of town on parcels. Um, I wouldn't mind trying to allocate some of that to bring in people that can do that for us, and sort of inform us, so we kind of get a, 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 a level set on. If we want to do something, what's the best use of North Ave, what's the best use of, you know, for the library expansion? Do we not want to do something on that slab, because they already have designs that show how they plan on using the parcel? You know, with their three different options, things like that.
You know, we have, you know, we have certain areas where we have that, the Shell, Donald Morrison Drive.
Inman Hill.
Inman Hill.
Yep.
We have, um, uh, the, uh.
Province Street.
Well, we have Province Street too, we have Trask.
Yep.
We have now, with the paddock property, we have that house and that barn, and we have all these different areas, that, and to have a professional, you know, consultant come in and evaluate the condition of every one of them, and what's, what possible uses are of each.
So what we tend to do is, if we have a project, and somebody says, I think it should be here, and then we look at that project for that space as opposed to, what's the best use of that space across all the needs of the town?
Sort of something similar to what was done for the housing production plan, is looking at different properties and saying that what, like, what could they be used for in terms of affordable housing, but, yeah, I mean, I like that, I, I like that idea. I guess the question is, you know, how much would that cost, how much do we have left, and how quickly?
Jack is, is collecting information from CMRPC, and I'd asked, could you have that ready maybe by our first meeting in December?
So that tabletop exercise, as Jack called it for CMRPC, is essentially taking your data and filtering it in a usable way. That should be available to us, there's a lot of technical assistance with CMRPC.
That's what I was thinking.
Which is part of our annual fee, which it should not be.
Okay, I see.
So that, at first, what should we be looking at, should be free, and then we can contract with a design firm to say, now, test it in square footage, is looking.
We've got seven parcels, we want you to advise us on something like that, but if we could contract that by the end of the year. We could.
Does that seem?
So we have fifty-two thousand dollars unallocated, I'm asking for eighty-five hundred for the TextMyGov, forty-four thousand. Um, and then there's twenty thousand in renovation punch list, which, because it's so sporadic, I don't think I can get under contract. I mean, to do a lot of it, we were just allocated or appropriated additional monies into the building equipment repair line, the general fund, um, from free cash for fiscal twenty twenty-five, so items like the door replacement I want to do by the treasurer collector's office would be taken care of through that general fund, um, so really, there's sixty, sixty-four thousand dollars.
And then, I know that, uh, is Phil still on, simply? I know Phil and Chief Curzio are meeting with the architect tomorrow to talk about, hey, given where we are, this is what we're thinking of doing. So they're looking to get a price, which I think, we have twenty-five in adaptive reuse, but it might be more than twenty-five if we say, hey, we want to do these three things, you know, so he's gonna, my point is, I think they'll have an idea of what that might look like in terms of a cost, if we want to engage.
That should be coming through pretty quick, uh, Mike, we also have the engineering firm, because.
Right, so, so, I just want to make sure that, that, that work is not lost when we're talking about allocating funds. It's probably twenty-five plus if we repurpose the adaptive reuse.
Well, my, I guess my suggestion based on all this would be, um, with that, forty-four thousand, rescind the twenty to sixty-four thousand. We have twenty-five thousand more we'll get in November, um, I'll do some work on firms that I know that do the sort of feasibility or feasibility light sort of thing, do you remember, um, we can come back December fourth and say, how much does the twenty-five thousand need to be augmented by? And how much do we have left, and kind of, does that get us where we need to be on feasibility? Um, and then because that's architecture, um, engineering and related services, it doesn't need to go through a thirty B process. So even if it's above ten thousand dollars. Um, there's a design selection procedure on the agenda that is, uh, for construction projects with greater than three hundred thousand dollars. This is not a construction side associated, so, um, it would be, it, you know, you are, you can, we can do sealed, you know, proposals for, you know, any, for a five thousand dollar, whatever they want to, if we're not, uh, cut off from doing competitive procurement, but we're not obligated to in this situation.
And, and in the end, see, December fourth, we can come together and say, we think we want, we can do this much, are we then saying, and I'm not sure we are saying it, I'm suggesting, we, whatever balance is left, we just roll the general expenses, just call it a day.
Correct.
That, that is our cleanup.
Yeah, that's, that's our end, end game, I see.
And so that on the fourth, on December eighteenth, if.
Right.
Highway surveyor has not spent his two thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars on equipment for the highway traffic, it gets rescinded.
So I messaged, uh, Jeremy today about setting up some time with our Civics Plus vendor, about talking just in the next. We're gonna talk about it in like a week or two, um, they have, and they do our website, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, and we just went into contract with them to redo our website, they have a module, um, that's unique to them, uh, that allow, that, you know, we'll see the demo, should allow us to do end-to-end meeting management, meaning that right now, um, right now, the TA and assistant, like, basically when they put together these agendas, then they also have to record all our votes and everything that was said, all that good stuff, and then it needs to go to the website. Uh, you know, goes back to the agenda, there's a link to it, so this module would allow all of that to be integrated so that, um, she could sit here in the meeting, record our votes, all of that, and it would be linked to the original agenda, and, um, you know, you could track data over time, all the stuff that's hard right now.
And it's native to the website, ways that Microsoft lists.
So, we don't know what its fees are, it's a plugin, so, given that the whole site was thirty thousand dollars. Um, you know, I would hope that that cost wouldn't be too high, and it could enable not just our admin, but like other admins to do the same sort of thing, and have, uh, reduce some of the load on Ellen to handle agenda creation, some of it's automatic, so, uh, anyway, uh, that could be, uh, an easy use of a, of a small leftover amount of money, uh, we just need to find out about it.
We have, we have money to replace these because they're getting to the end of the useful life, is what we've been told.
Well, I have to find out, I guess, when we purchase them, is that part of the general?
Yes, well, the point is that, where there, there wasn't, we didn't have them, and we had, had made the request, and we got these. So this is the first, first time we ever had them here, going on five years old.
Yeah, that's like the.
Well, at least this one is, I, I mean, maybe when we went from three to five, you know, we had, we, because we had three, we had two more.
They're all Surface Eight pros with eight gigs of memory. Even Mike last, he's not a tech guy, so.
I'm tech adjacent.
Tech adjacent. Yeah, I mean, like, the edges of my touchscreen don't work anymore.
Yeah, so if, I mean, if we could get a price for replacements, maybe we can use some ARPA funds for that.
But shouldn't we be building this, kind of, we talked about this with the library, peripherals and equipment, I mean, don't we want to? Well, my point is like, do we build this in our FI twenty-six and kind of operationalize it in sort of a regular cyclical, you know?
Schedule.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're at the point where we just like developed essentially an asset log with like tags and serials numbers, because we were referring to things back and forth as like Gales or laptop, right, what happened to Gales laptops, like, what in the world are you talking about? Like that, you know, then it gets washed through, it's like, oh, well, now it's so and so, so I'd love to develop this replacement plan, but we need to do a better job of measuring what we currently have, before we can, I mean, not before, as a part of.
Asset tags and stuff.
Yeah, so we need to have a scanning system and a sticker making system and all that kind of stuff, right, talking about all that.
And there's somebody to do it.
And somebody to do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's tough, because everything's one-off right now, especially if you have to get your computer repaired. Like, what if you don't get back the same one, you know, with different serial number, they change the board, whatever, yeah, it gets complicated. But yeah, five years is, these should be the edge for any corporate setting.
And that's what, that's what these are?
Yeah, I thought it was three, but.
Like I said, this.
Three developers, five years for.
No, these.
Oh, these, yeah, well, the model year is.
Three of the, three of them are, three of them are three years old, three of them are five years, two of them are three years.
Yeah, I think this is just the Lonnie's old one.
Or could be, well, then they could be.
Right.
Yeah, yours, right. All I know is that three of us had them until we had five members of the board, and then suddenly five of us have them, because everybody had them. And I don't know where those other two came from, if they knew where, or they repurposed, or, I don't know.
I don't know, Lonnie handed it to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, we don't.
Mine appeared to be in a sealed box.
Yes.
Mine did not, mine came in lots of fact.
So you've got.
The three of us got new ones.
Yeah, so, you know. A thousand dollar. Uh, yeah, so let me get a, I was on at my plan this weekend.
Yeah, right, yeah, anything with that suggestion, I like, I mean, it's, it's come up a lot about using the, you know, properties and evaluating, it's come up especially from you a lot, and stuff like, but I think it would also, um, feed into the, uh, athletic fields, um, the recreational fields.
But that's like an expansion of that, that nice, um, wasn't a, that like table of assigned uh, values from the land use committee, right, like, it would be a more detailed.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
To actually, yeah, consider, consider the land in terms of, yeah, what could be built there.
Okay.
So we'll have, and we'll, uh, we'll be revisiting ARPA again next time?
Yes, and then if, or it's a memorable on the texting communication solution for eight thousand.
Do you want us to wait until that, or do you want to, or do you want us to?
Be in motion on that.
There's not, we, we didn't, we wanted to wait until after town meeting.
Okay.
So if, so yeah, it would, it would be, it would be easier on my workflow wise, if I could do this one before the next opening, rather than trying to jam.
That might be losing for a reason, what was the amount again?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just think, I think this is a good idea, because I've, I've run into some people on various Facebook pages and stuff, looking for this sort of thing to have.
I agree, I've also, I've also seen that, that people are like, how are we supposed to know these things? It's not everybody looks at the physical mail in their mailbox or things to go to the website, so I think, yeah, finding ways to reach people where, like, the ways they want to be reached, so, and texting is, is one of them, I think that's great.
Uh, in the same thing, I started a town's Facebook page, so.
I saw that.
Some of that, great.
Be posting official stuff, so share, find, find it, follow it, share it.
I, I liked it.
Any other, other discussion?
Follow me in the Facebook.
Uh, all in favor? Post, right, great, thank you. Alright, so, yeah, that'll be, that'll be interesting. Alright, so then we have fifteen is review model designer selection procedures for municipalities, and, uh, Jeremy, I believe this is you.
So, back in September, I like this, and then we just got busy, and it was not totally applicable to anything we're doing, so it kind of got for some priority. So, and J L seven C says, um, uh, we need to adopt written designer selection procedures for building construction projects with an estimated design fee of thirty thousand dollars or more, and an estimated construction cost of three hundred thousand dollars. And this was last revised, they updated from ten and one hundred thousand to thirty and thirty thousand, and changed, um, it from an or to an and, so we need to hit both thresholds in order to trigger this, so OIG does a good job where they just produce model um, procedures for us to follow, and they say, plug in your, your municipality, um, so that's what I did here. And so, um, if a body designates individual, group of individuals who conduct the designer selection process. So in towns where they have a standing municipal building commission, or permanent building committee, something like that, um, the legislative body says perpetuity unless otherwise, yeah, it's you, I hear we don't have them, so here, the, each time you did a big construction project, uh, this board would either designate themselves as the designer selection, um, um, board, or the committee, as this calls it, um, or something else, so in terms of the, then senior community center should get to, or end up to that, um, black rail, you would then designate the building committee, or some subset of the building committee, or something. So, um, you know, it prevents against conflict. So, you know, it prevents against conflict interest and all that sort of stuff. And talks about what we need to do for qualifications, which just heads towards our. applications anyway. So all this stuff here is essentially stuff that we have to do, that GL just says then have to codify.
So this is a template?
This is the template.
I read it, gave you full credit for.
I put in, I think I, I think I put in. There were a few things where I, okay, city related stuff, but this is, yeah, this is the OIG's template. We adopted it. And this is something our auditors tend to ask for. Also, the city of Agro did a massive, massive construction projects and up until twenty twenty one did not have this adopted either. So it's not something that.
I move to vote to approve designer selection procedures as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, great. Thank you, Jeremy.
Policy and procedure out of the park.
Yeah.
Hey.
Right, so then I guess we run sixteen, gas deal conservation restriction.
So this was. What I do know is that when I was forwarded the email on this, and we just saw Carl.
Same Carl is on there, so.
When I was forwarded the email on this. It was from when Isabella just started. So this has been bouncing around for at least a year in one way or the other. The order of operations, I'll let Carl get into the, into the specifics because he knows better than I do. The order of operations on this. So we're the grantor, the grantee is the Metacom Land Trust. And this is the conservation restriction. It needs to be approved by the state. So what this vote would be, would be approving this conservation restriction pending state approval. So there's no sign of this tonight. The state would then approve it. It would come back to us with a sign and then Metacom Land Trust, Metacom Land Trust would. Record it and then they have the ninety day clock starts on them on getting out and measuring. That's right.
Where is this?
Thirty-two George Street. The Gas Gill Meadows for excavation.
That's where the, the building that they redid is like, right, you turn that around, the curve, the twenty mile an hour curve on the left.
The little antique house.
Okay, the.
All those fields.
Yep.
Yeah, oh, we. I can say, yeah, Carl, do you have anything to add on this?
No, this is one of our first town. This was the first subdivision that had an open space project. So there's been a number of issues that have come before. The Concom and maybe the select board dealing with, with it. We had a, a big cleanup effort there, both of the George Street House and also the area north of it where. Set of sheds, milking sheds had burned down. So this is just the continuation of the process. And as Jeremy said. The next step is to, to get it cleaned up enough for sending for state approval.
And so. We would. We would need to make a motion about this, but you said not, not sign anything yet.
Right, so it will be a motion to approve conservation restriction pending final state approval.
I move to approve the gas bill conservation restriction pending file.
Second.
For the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Votes? Right, great. Thank you and thank you, Carl.
Easy. I didn't have to do anything. It's just.
Well, maybe we're here in case we had questions. So that's, that's actually often helpful.
Your staff and my staff are going through and doing all the work and making us look good.
Yes, okay. Well, so thank you, Isabella, and thank you, Jeremy, and anyone else who was involved with this, this work. Alright, so then on to the old saltbox road update.
Yes, so. We had this survey. We have a deed description. We have a plan that is being filed with registry. The Friday or Monday, we're making a check cut for them. For the surveyor to register, to record this. That's our first step. It sounds a little silly, but in order to accept this language, you know what it is and who it's from, right? So this is our first step on what it is. And then council was working on the who it's from. So this was going through. The will and the various deed descriptions provided by Jane Wall and family to determine who is the ultimate owner of this. I've said this before and the last times we talked about this, that Dan Byers done an amazing job of going through registry documents and. Piecing together a narrative into. Something kind of proof positive. So we're moving forward on the. Surveying, we're finished on the surveying part and we're recording. The other piece is, is what council. So again, this will be accepted by Conservation Commission as conservation lands and then ratified here. It won't go to town. And it was like, I'll, I'll share the match with you when I might have a digital version of it. So. There's a sliver of a sliver.
Is there a, is there a timeframe for when those final steps are being targeted?
I have not previously had success in getting accurate timeframes.
But that, that council is the party we're waiting on now. Who can ask the question a little bit later then? Okay.
Will we hope for an update at our next meeting?
Yeah, just.
At least it will be, yes, there will be some progress if not actual. Polishing. And then item eighteen is the select board policies and procedures.
I move to approve the select board.
Did not have time to read all of these. It was, we, this came this morning.
I thought they're really strong though. They're good. I like them.
Okay, why?
Thank you.
So this was. I've said it a couple of times, very intuitive from the. And it was very interesting before I was still involved, but then incorporating comments through discussion with Brad, Katie and I. So I think this is, this is the final polished piece and let's keep it on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would love it. I would love a chance to actually at least lay my eyes on each page of it because I know I've read. Versions. I mean, this is, you know, I just haven't seen other people's. Feedback incorporated yet.
I just said there's one still edit, my edit on. Facilitating parties if need be. If the three of you felt that's not needed, take it out. I don't feel that strongly about it.
Yeah, there was, I think, yeah, we ended up keeping like two comments that were. Didn't quite know what to do with or didn't feel confident in giving a thumbs up or kind of thumbs down.
Or leave it in to discuss. I don't think, but if it's there.
That was the thought. We would discuss it if necessary.
To me, it was me looking back, not looking forward. So if you, I wouldn't be, if it wasn't there the next time I start copying, you know, that's fine.
Well, I, I'm thrilled that we're at the point where. Could potentially vote. I don't know. Am I the only one that didn't have a chance to read it?
No, I, I didn't, I didn't even realize that a new iteration had come, come over.
I think with all the. Hard work preparing for the special town meeting, I think this is one thing where like it's. But, but it's so close. So I think we can actually.
One, one thing I might ask though is I read it. It's part of the package, right? So if I didn't actually get to, I mean, the whole thing, I don't know if something like this you want to send separately.
I would actually appreciate that. Oh, yeah, so that we could put in comments if needed because we might, we might have minor adjustments.
No, 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 no more, no more comments. It's really good. But, but in all seriousness, we said it's a living, breathing document, so. No, no, I'm not saying, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a living, breathing document when you first bring it to life.
Yes. Very long gestation period.
It hasn't been too, too long. It's been like two years.
Sounds like.
Municipal government, man.
Okay, well, great. So thank you so much for continuing to move that forward. And Katie, please send us that, that. And next time we will vote on it. Uh, oh, town administrator report. Jeremy.
Yeah. Okay, so we've covered the town meeting related stuff. So a couple of things that I was spending a big part of my time on, so a holiday party announcement here announced during the ARPA discussions, like Friday, the twentieth and five to nine in Calperts. So I'm starting budget work and I'll have a calendar to share with the, with the committee for the next meeting to set expectations. Expectations board department had some of the dates that they, you know, need to have various things that we can talk about the specific dates there. I hear, yeah, using a template. Starting as a, continue to work on the fiscal twenty-six revenue projections. So on kind of a high level. Using. Conservative priors, conservative approach to priors and controlling for solid waste. So since solid waste. Revenues are in fiscal twenty-five general fund and not be in fiscal twenty-six general fund. I, you know, control for that. It looks like our general fund revenues will be up. Three and three quarters percent, maybe close to four percent, depending on how we continue to trend on local receipts and how conservative we want to be there. So. I think that's a healthy number, especially when, you know, so, so much of our general fund is consistent of taxes, which we really don't expect the two and a half plus of. So we need to dial in growth. That's the assessors realm here. Local receipts is this board's realm. So I'll be presenting a. Recommendation on that. As I look at local receipts, we're at, it's a seven percent increase of my expectations for fiscal twenty-six budget over what the fiscal twenty-five budget is, just on the budgeting side. But when we look at that number as a percentage of what our fiscal twenty-four actuals are, it's only seventy-seven percent. There were a lot of. Eusocratic things about fiscal twenty twenty-three work. Like I've talked about more than vehicle exercise a lot. What I haven't talked about in specificity is investment income. So we know. There was. Quite a bit of. Success in the markets and, and, and both equities fixed income and then also in just high yield savings accounts. Sorry, I'm trying to stall as I get to my sheet. So we, but we budget typically in a years since fiscal twenty-two, three, four and five. Budgeted two thousand three hundred dollars a year in investment. Over those ten years, we have received twenty-three hundred dollars. So we hit budget. In fiscal twenty-two and then in fiscal twenty-three, we were at a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars investment income. And in fiscal twenty-four, we were at four hundred and five thousand dollars. So some of that has to do with how. Treasured operations operate, but some of it has to do with broader economic trends, for which we don't have a ton of, ton of control. So. I didn't, so I have a fifteen thousand dollar carrying number for fiscal twenty-six. So that's, you know, a whole thirteen thousand dollars of our initial budget, but still a fraction of what we've actually experienced. There's also, there's a lot of, a lot of dynamic work to do. One thing we will budget in fiscal twenty-six is local option sales tax on cannabis. So I think the town was. In a good, town is in a good position because of prior decisions on close community agreement impact fees. So. Lots of folks, lots of municipalities are getting taken on finding those. And it doesn't happen at all. And our fiscal twenty-four actuals in cannabis, and so it's a local option sales tax. So it's a three and a half percent prepaid by the consumer at the point of sale. Sent to the state and then remitted to us on a quarterly basis. Our fiscal twenty-four budget, our fiscal twenty-four actuals were around eighty thousand dollars. And our Q one collections in fiscal twenty-five were over thirty thousand dollars. So trending better too. And cannabis revenues don't tend to be too. As opposed to meals tax, which you see a greater amount. So anyway, that's, that's where, that's where we're looking at in terms of fiscal twenty-six revenue first blush. Next, three fifty-one, the MMA annual conference. Katie has ability to bulk register. So if you want Katie to register you for it, shoot her notes, she'll register you. I'm planning on attending. I didn't know who was planning on attending.
Is it, what are the, is it Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Yes, yes, the trade show is no longer Saturday. January twenty-third, fourth and fifth. Which is, yeah, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
I, I would like to go, so.
I'm going to go.
Yeah.
So that's two of us. Anyone else?
Uh, I'm going. I'm just putting an email. Yeah, it's a kitty.
And it's, is it, it's in the Seaport this time? Yeah, so you can, there's, there's going to be a hotel, everything all. So you'll send us, you can send us something with that so we can register at the hotel and.
Yeah.
Or will you just register us for all of that?
Yeah, you can, you can register for it.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So if you'd like Katie to do that for you, send it, send her a note and she'll do it for you. If you want to, I'm sure you have, you can decide ten days beforehand. You can do it in your own.
And when, when do we need to get back to? I mean, we, so like, I know I registered myself. Last year. And like I, I'm interested in attending the, the WEMO launch, the Women in Elected Municipal Office.
That's an additional checkbox.
It is.
And I, I think.
So I don't know, like, is that?
At least I said I was going to, so.
You can register up to January twentieth.
I'll, I'll check in with Katie.
She wants me to.
When would you like us to get to you? If we want you. I want you to register. When do I need to let you know about? January nineteenth. I say, I say give us a deadline.
By the first of year. So in the month of December. If it gets into January and you have to let her know you're on your.
That time is so, yeah. It's, the town still pays. We're just, we're just responsible for forwarding the invoice. But if, I guess.
My only thing about the hotel is if. You know, I think it's going to be popular. So the sooner you get registered, the faster you get a room. Locked out if you're gonna stay.
I see.
You know.
And Katie, are you also attending?
I would like to.
Yeah.
That would be good.
Yeah. Good.
As Jason mentioned, your website project is underway. We have one day done on this agenda. Plugin. We had a kickoff meeting for it on Tuesday. About a half an hour into it, Brendan texted me and said, what's the status of our website project? So that was, that was. So we've got about six to eight months before we go live. So there's lots of. Iterations to this. They, we're on the kind of. The, the mood of the word of sort, I don't know, part of this where we talk about how we want, where we want buttons and how, you know. Slideshow and color palettes and branding and stuff like that. So I've been sending over a lot of, we've got a lot of good era photography, particularly from Nick Kirsten.
He does a great job.
We have a lot of that. I've been poking around SharePoint and Historic Society's stuff. So. Like a nineteen fifties, there are highway department photo, I think would, would be fitting at some point on the, on the, on the page. So. And then of course, all of our logos and branding and then the same with the Taft Library. They're going to have the, in the same. Under the same umbrella as us, but have, you know, total control over their side of the house sort of thing. And we'll essentially invert our. Our, all the buttons and brand, all the colors and everything to make it feel related, but not. Feel distinct, but still.
Just to throw it out there, there is, there is in existence a, a black and white. Photograph from the nineteen forties of the Menden Police Department in an army surplus Jeep. Front of the town hall, still a dirt road.
I, I am eighty percent sure I had that. I saw it. I've seen that photo. I think I had. Even if it's only, I, I don't, I don't quite know how the artistic sign works, but I agree that that's. Say, well, I've worked on that. We'll have lots of migration stuff. Actually, we'll go live in, you know, moments. So there won't really be downtime between.
Is there going to be a test server before then? All of us access it and look at it, should.
It should be because it's an entirely different platform.
It should be because it's an entirely different platform.
Yes, it should be like in parallel.
Yeah. Yeah, because they have to, part of the reason this takes so long is the assets, like the meeting minutes and agendas that, you know, they're going to have to bring all that over. All the way back to however far we asked them to do it, and that takes.
So it said that do like two hundred documents for us. I'm like, that's. So what they're going to do is do eight hundred documents for us, you know, sorry, and then we can, they'll show us how to do that, or we can put it in an archive. Folks can access. There was one question that Katie brought up, because she's like, eight hundred is not a lot either. So I brought it up in our kickoff meeting. I don't know the exact process or how, but it is on our radar to make sure that we have.
Is that like something we can get our senior center volunteers to help out with? We could train somebody to do that.
Yeah. Or you mean that the abatement workers?
Yeah.
They're not volunteers.
You're right, they're not. They're giving their time for abatement.
I mean, many of them are also volunteers, but it's worth it.
HR and I, we're looking at voluntary benefits program. So this is fully paid benefits. But some, you know, just additional stuff that's, you know, we focus on a totally voluntary basis. Principally a increased and more robust short term disability plan that we currently have. These municipalities are exempt from PFML, P F M L net relief. So it's one way in which we're at a benefits disadvantage from the private sector, which kind of hasn't happened in one of. I asked specifically, and the one thing that short term disability does not mirror from PFML is paternity leave. Besides that, it essentially. I had a kickoff, or not kickoff, an update meeting on Providence Street over today with our design engineer and highway surveyor. So we have a proposal from them on our file solution for that. So. I'm going through that a little bit. There are some parts and terms and conditions I want to make sure we're okay with. We're continues in policy review. Personnel side, on the financial side, we have two documents that this board has said a couple of times that have been kind of at the doorstep, or a document at the doorstep. It's actually one of the financial management. Policies that were adopted by the Long Term Financial Management Committee and then updated most recently in twenty eighteen. The logs as by Rich Schofield in twenty eighteen. So I'm going through that and redlining it. And then there's also a. Policy created by our town accountant, which has all of the statutory obligations we have to, they were just bringing to. So it's a little boilerplate, so I'm going through it to come up with some stuff. I need more input from the county, from the treasurer and assessors, just on stuff that. I'm not going to dictate to the treasurer, but the petty, or we don't have cash, but drawers to make change at the Board of Health should be hundred dollars, three hundred dollars. I'm not going to do. And then more important things like tailings as well. So we're moving forward on that. What I'm going to do with the financial policy that was most recently updated in twenty eighteen is while I'm going to redline it, show you the changes and making content. I'm then going to go in parallel and make it mirror more the structure of what I typically see in a policy document where it says like purpose, applicability, policy, reference. Rather than just kind of bullet points on these are the things we should do. So it will have two documents, one of them kind of two different ways. So you can see the changes and then see the. I'm also looking into a recording secretary vendor relationship. So places like the Conservation Commission. The planning, the zoning board appeals. Sometimes get behind on minute production, especially when on the finance committee, especially when ones that aren't staffed. So planning and ZBA are staffed and have complicated ones. But Board of Health is on top of their stuff. But COMCOM and HINCOM have staff dedicated to the administrative assistant pieces of things. So this is something that our health agent had brought up to me that other communities has been successful. Pay person per meeting to do these sorts of things. So I have two people who are interested in it. So I'm just going to. Make sure we have a decent volume of work for them and then see what a comparable rate would be and it would be a.
Will they attend the meeting?
They can, they can watch it afterwards.
Either way.
Yeah, and it's a fixed rate per meeting. So, you know, a thirty five dollar rate per meeting, a four dollar rate per meeting, whatever we kind of set along. Other communities do this. But I, I think it would. Help out some of the volunteers.
Yeah.
And then the rest of stuff is just some stuff we'll be out from today's meeting. So that's all.
Thank you. Right, so future agenda items, I know a few of them have come up tonight, so. Select board policies and procedures approval, ARPA. But other ones, especially anything that we want to get in. We only have two more meetings this year, I believe.
So goal setting?
Right, goal setting, right. So, I mean, in terms of like, right, we had hopes to do goal setting earlier and we did manage to do that, that College Center Retreat, which. Covered at least some of the goals, but so I guess one question is. Do we, I mean, we're, we're pretty late in the, you know. Fiscal year, but I still, I'm still in favor of having some sort of, you know, goal setting, because it might actually set us up in a better position for goal setting. For next year.
We have themes, right? I mean, even if we didn't talk about them. We have, there are themes that keep coming up, land use, cap, capital planning. There are some like high level themes. I think maybe the most effective way, because we, instead of boiling the ocean every time we have a goal setting plan, would be to figure out how to set up something. That could extend for years of time so that you could get specific in there. So a theme is a general. Idea of things that you might want to have some goals on, and then we could talk about that feature. I'm trying to make a, I think of a way, we do this with long term planning and, and my company. When we go out to the three and five year, which is very difficult to do, right? So they're really high level, you know, so it's. If, if we could figure out a way to generalize how the board might focus their goals for those three years, then. It's not a whole, hey, what's everything we want to do? And then you flip the five to the top of it.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that's, that's a good point. I know Jeremy had also suggested getting a facilitator at some point. So like, I mean, but. I think also you thought it might not make sense to do that at this point, for, for, like halfway through the year, but like, I don't know. I mean, it, it does.
I think for this fiscal year, halfway through, there are things in motion. I think we should just look at what's in motion and say, what are the few things we want to accomplish in the next six months?
Right.
Add that to, actually get into the process of talking to the TA about.
Right.
Goals and performance reviews and things like that.
I think it would be useful also to, like, you know, from our previous goal setting meeting, we actually did make some progress, but we never, we haven't sort of formalized like, oh, these are the things that we worked on. And I think it would be nice to step. Back and actually see like, okay, these are some goals that we set, and this is what we, what we did. In furthering some of those goals. And then here are some things that we might want to revisit.
Separate year and long term efforts, because I think we have done, had a few things that would be a multi-year span.
So anyhow, so that, I mean, I know we're, it's, it's hard to find dates. So anyhow, so our, like, yeah, rolling in our, you know, next meeting date. So we, our next meetings. Like regular meetings are December fourteenth and December eighteenth. And then we run, sorry, December fourth, thank you, yes, late. December fourth and December eighteenth, we do run into it that the first. Wednesday of January is January first, so we're not going to meet then because it's New Year's Day and town holiday. So. I go, so.
Just bump it a week?
We could bump it a week. There is something that I was invited to, that I was hoping to go to. So like, I. On the eighth, but I said, I'm not sure yet because we might be eating them. So, I mean, and then we've got, you know, the fifteenth. So I think to some extent we need to decide like how much there is on the agenda that we, that we need to cover, because we have sometimes been able to go like.
Yeah.
We can wait until the fifteenth.
Because that's a five week month.
Yeah, so if we did.
The fifteenth and the twenty ninth, you're thinking?
So I'm not thinking.
I mean, if, if we did the fifteenth and the twenty ninth, the twenty ninth would line us up after the MMA conference to have a discussion about that.
Oh, that's a nice point. So I know what we might run into for the twenty ninth would be, we, we might have a room conflict, but I think we could figure that out. We have it up. So there's a downstairs, right, like at Board of.
Downstairs.
Sometimes when we move our meeting to off cycle, we run into like conflicts there.
The, right, the police station.
I blend Wednesdays.
What's that?
I just blend Wednesdays.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, if, if it works for us to just, you know, skip the first and go to the fifteenth, but like, and at some point if we want to. Right, so have, have an additional meeting in January, either the twenty second or the twenty ninth.
I think I'd rather have one of those versus a Saturday or something.
Right. In terms of like.
See, I think you just push it off till the fifteenth, see if we can, we didn't even need another one.
Right, so, well, so what if, I mean, so hypothetically, what if we did the fifteenth for our regular meeting? And then the twenty ninth for a goal setting meeting after the MMA conference, like.
What's nice about that is because it's a fifth Wednesday, if you then get on a first Wednesday cycle in February, you'll have back to back weeks of meetings. So you have one that's a goal setting meeting and then one that's regular.
It works.
So twenty ninth hopefully as. Goal discussion, maybe, so. Perhaps revisiting our goals.
Bring the flip chart.
And that also gives us a chance to think about, like, maybe we can. As we lead up to that, think about preparation that we can each do for that meeting. But it'll be nice, we'll have, we'll have approved our policies and procedures manually by then, so that will be, that will be great. All right, so, so we'll say January meeting dates, we're going to do the fifteenth and the twenty ninth. That sound like what we said?
Yes.
Great. All right, anything else before we go to executives?
Not necessarily an agenda item, but a topic out there, might be for the twenty ninth, is actually digitizing records.
Which records?
All records.
All records.
I mean, we talked about it with the assessors. Eighteen months ago, and it seemed like a great idea because it's just a lot of space. It's coming up in the building, senior center, you know. Today, talking design and they're saying, well, we need file space. And part of me says, do we need file space or do we need to digitize records?
Right.
Right, I have a feeling we provide an opportunity. It's probably to digitize and, you know.
I've done this with two different organizations and it takes a lot of forethought in terms of. What records, how they state, what, the double sided, do you need a back, are they bound, like all those sorts of things. But once you get through all of that thinking about the project. The project's pretty hands off. You have to venture to do it. And it's in both instances where I did it, it was, it was cheaper than I expected.
Yeah, I just think that there's an opportunity that they're out there. Probably more looking towards like an Y twenty six type of ARPA project. But it just came up today and I said, oh, we haven't talked about it.
There's a state contract specifically that's serviced, so there's a lot of vendors.
I'd like to get some of these file kept inside of the hallway.
And in terms of records retention, Secretary of Commonwealth, that, that satisfies.
Okay, scan, it's thick, right, doesn't have to be physical.
Is there any, I guess, a little off fire field fire, that rules about the storage, like when you've done backups, getting all this other stuff?
I think it depends on the type of file. But yeah, there are, there is differentiation.
I think a, a parallel consideration to a lot of, we've talked about tonight, because we've talked a lot about tech. Opportunities for efficiencies is marrying that with. Technical training to make sure everyone in town is comfortable working in a tech, digital environment. Because it's, there's a lot of people that, like. Michael Mendelia was the first person to say pen and paper, you know, because that's what he was used to doing back in the day. I just think if we do any of these things, as we're doing it, we gotta think about how do we make everybody comfortable to work in a, that digital environment.
All right, so. I think then there isn't anything else that we want to bring up. We've got all the. These items, I think we could move to executive session. I guess we could move there and I guess I could move. So we're ready for that? All right. I move to enter executive session under MGL. C thirty A, section twenty one, for purpose six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. The board will not reconvene in open session for the purposes of adjournment, so we will adjourn from executive session. Discussion, right, and then I believe we need a roll call vote to enter executive session. So Brugos eye.
No.
Carter, I.
Put your eye.
Rowan.
All right, great. So thank you, those of you who are on live.
Have a good night.
Good night.